2025 Meeting of the Coffee County Board of Education. Welcome to everybody here that sits in person and all our fans out there in YouTube land, wherever they may be. So we want to get going here with prayer and Mr. Henser.
Phil Wood, bow with me, please. O dear, most gracious heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this day that you've given us, dear Lord. We want to thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We want to thank you for the school system, for our teachers, for our people that are bus drivers and everybody that basically that has anything to do with getting our kids into our school systems and watching over them. Dear Lord, we pray that you will go with us tonight through this meeting, watch over us, care for us on our way home. We will be careful to give you all the praise in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. All right, stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, tonight we have our student ambassadors are Ava McIntosh and Olivia Vinson, who have both been here before. And Ava was the recipient of the board scholarship. And I know that Ava and Olivia both got multiple awards, had awards day last week. So I lost count on all the awards they got. So congratulations and thanks for coming and, you know, doing one last round with us here at the board meeting. So, all right, so our recognition tonight is first up, we want to have Coffee County High School girls' basketball, and then we have Coffee County High School DECA. So, Dr. Powell?
It's my privilege tonight to honor a group of girls that I've been watching for the last four or five years or so, in some cases, some of them this year. But this is our Coffee County Lady Raiders High School basketball team. I want to introduce Coach Joe Pat Cope, and he's going to come up and introduce the girls. So ladies, if he introduces you, come up here and up front, we'll go from there, okay? Coach Cope?
Thank you very much, Dr. Powell. Thank you very much, board, for recognizing us. A very special bunch of young ladies who has made Coffee County very proud. I'll bring them up here and I'll tell you a little bit about what they've accomplished over the last few seasons. Adeline Clark. Haley Harris. Lily Matherne. Andon Selvog. Kason Morgan. J.D. Nakadula. Lilly Duke. Morgan Spears. Ella Arnold. Ella's also playing in the region finals tomorrow at Page in softball, so multi-sport athlete. Natalie Barnes. Now our three seniors, Ava McIntosh. Olivia Vinson. Shannon Gannon. And we also have Coach Anita Gannon. Okay, to tell you a little bit about this bunch, I'll be real quick. I know you guys got a lot of stuff on the agenda tonight. But back-to-back state tournaments, this senior bunch here has never lost a district home game, or no, a district game period, home or away. They're part of eight straight district championships, back-to-back region championships. The first time in five-on-five history in Coffee County won was this year. They broke it. Last year, they set the school record for wins with 33 wins. It took them one year to break it. This year, they had 34 wins. So just, if you were at awards day the other day, you can see how special they were, too. Shannon's got a full scholarship to Southern Indiana. Olivia's going to Lipscomb University. Ava turned down a scholarship to play college basketball, but still had many awards. She's pursuing her education at Tennessee Tech. And one of the things I'm most proud of, every senior that has graduated in our program the last eight years is either enrolled in college or have already earned their degree. So that's just hats off to Coffee County education and what it means, okay? Thank you guys very much for all your support. We sure appreciate you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, ladies.
See you next fall.
So we have Coffee County High School DECA. Is that?
Sir?
Coffee County High School DECA.
Why, yes, ma'am.
It'd be dangerous giving me the microphone. I'm Angela Prater, and I am the DECA advisor at Coffee County High School. I've been the DECA advisor for 23 years, took over after the illustrious Mr. David Fisk when he retired in '02. But tonight I have with me Raleigh Clark. Raleigh is my DECA president, and she has also taken us to International Career Development Conference competition for the past two years in the area of sports and entertainment marketing. It's a very hard competition to be in with DECA, and for her to earn it two years in a row is a great accomplishment.
Thank you.
Thank you, congrats.
All right, now we have the call to order. There is no public comment tonight, so we will have the principals report. And I know we got a few of them here tonight. I always picture them in the back of the room arm wrestling to see who has to go first.
I wanted to invite you all to our awards day program. That is next Tuesday. We will begin with our sixth grade. Sixth grade will be at 8:15. Our seventh graders will be at 9:30. And then our eighth grade awards promotion program will be at 10:45. So all of you are welcome to attend those awards programs. That's next Tuesday. Okay?
All right.
It's the end of the year. There's thousands of things happening, so I just thought I would mention that. But if you certainly have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. So elementary, we have a lot of things going on. We finished our state testing, so we were glad to get that behind us. We had our fifth graders visit the middle school and had a tour of the middle school and to see what that was all about and what's coming up for them. They always enjoy that. We also had the fifth grade county-wide field day, which is organized by Ms. Tanya Gardner back there, and that's always, that's a really fun thing. It's rained on them, but they still have fun. It doesn't matter. But that was a big day. Our kindergarten and first grade had Mother's Day tea. That has become one of our largest parent involvement activities. They, it's wonderful. They really enjoy it. And then our second grade had a Mother's Day brunch, and we had a lot of turnout for that as well. Lemonade Day is Thursday, so we will be set up at the library and at Jefferson, so come visit us and buy some lemonade. That's a fun day. The kids learn how to do business and run business and how to set up business. We had our senior walk at Deerfield, and each year we have more and more seniors, it seems like, to come. The longer Deerfield is there, the more we have come to see us. So we're excited to welcome them. Right after the senior walk, we had the middle school band and choir perform for us, and they were really great. It was very, it's nice to see the middle school and the seniors, all the, in the elementary schools, to come back, and our elementary school students can see where they are going to be going and all the opportunities that they have. Our awards day is for our first, second, third, and fourth students are on the 20th, and it starts at 8:45, if you'd like to come. Our pre-K graduation is on the 21st. It's at 8:30. Our kindergarten graduation is at 9:30, and our fifth grade graduation is at 1:00. So we'd like to invite you all to come if you'd like to have a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parsley.
Good afternoon. I can talk about any number of things. It's, I call it that time of year at the high school where you go home in the evening and you're planning for the next day because there are things going on every day that are a little bit out of the ordinary. We had yearbook day yesterday, and yearbook looks great this year. We're very pleased with it. We give our students, you know, time to look at those yearbooks, sign those yearbooks a little bit on yearbook day. And again, it went very well. Students, of course, going through the halls, you still see those things around. Students are carrying those around, and, you know, some of them are at home, and some of them are still with students this week. Today, we also hosted the ninth graders in our building. Each year around this time, we bring them in. We talk with them for 10 or 15 minutes about the school, and then we do a fairly quick tour because they are, you know, having their school day over at Raider Academy. Our Student Government Association, we divide them into groups, and those young men and women walk those ninth grade students around and basically show them around and explain what some areas of the building are. They talk about some of our clubs, and these two young ladies here were some of those students that gave those tours today. That went very well. The ninth graders came over in four groups. There were groups of around 100 each, I, you know, look, give or take, and they were gone by around lunchtime. We begin semester exams this Friday, and that will start in the afternoon with our seventh period exam. So we've had lots of testing over the past few weeks, and of course tests. We've had state dual credit exams. We've got local dual credit exams that have occurred. And we've got AP testing that has gone on for the last several days, and it goes on through Friday of this week. And the way those tests are set up, you know, we do our best, not, we don't ring bells during that time. We do our hall changes by the clock rather than according to a bell system. And so it's been quite a while since I've heard a bell in our building with all the testing that's going on. But again, semester exams will start this Friday with seventh period. We'll take two of those each day on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of next week. And of course, our commencement is at 7:00 PM next Friday night. Ms. Katrina Wright is our assistant principal that coordinates graduation, and she does a fabulous job with that. She's done that for many years, and I don't know what I would do without her. She keeps me up to date with what's going on. She asks for my advice with a few things, but she's done it for so many years. She's got it. And, you know, we do things a little bit different, you might say, every year. A wrinkle that we added last year, I know Mr. Morris over there knows, we started busing our senior graduates into Carden Gerald. And so we drive them from the high school. It's sort of a last bus ride, you might say, for those students. And they get to pull into, not quite a packed house yet, but filling up at Carden Gerald Field, and so it's an exciting time for them. But again, we're just, we've got a lot of planning going for graduation at this time. I believe that's all I really have to share. We do have some other things going on that I know our ambassadors will cover. Any questions for me? Thank you.
All right, at this time, we have the call for intent. If there are no objections, I would like to move Agenda Item Nine to the consent agenda. That is surplus items, and that rarely gets any comment. And so, and, because I know everybody's chomping to get at the, all the budget amendments, so that'll speed things up a little bit. So any objections to that? So consider the budget or the agenda amended to remove Item Nine and put it on the consent agenda? All right, so would that change any?
Mr. Ballard, excuse me just a minute. Can I introduce our student ambassadors? They were not really aware they were supposed to be here except be recognized as the Lady Raiders.
Oh.
And they've got things that they had already planned for, so if it's, may I introduce those young ladies?
Sure, sure.
They can tell you what they want to tell you, if anything, and then you can let them go if you don't mind.
Okay, well, yeah, we usually keep them to the end, but that's probably fine.
Stand up, Olivia, so they can see you again. And Ava McIntosh. And these are our student ambassadors. They were supposed to have been here, I think, a couple or three meetings ago, but something come up, and I think they had a game that they weren't aware of or something happened. But anyway, they're with us tonight, and we certainly appreciate them being with us. Y'all have anything you want to tell the board, either one of you? Come up to the mic, Ava, if you don't mind. I know, I know you girls don't mind talking, because I've heard you.
And I think you should give us a little rundown on what your career plans are after high school, too, so.
Okay, well, Ava serves as the treasurer for the student government. My plans after high school, I plan to attend at Tennessee Tech and major in biology with a pre-fiscal therapy degree, and I plan to become a physical therapist with that, obviously. And.
My name is Olivia Vinson. I plan to attend Lipscomb University to play basketball. I'm also planning to major in education, and hopefully I can be, become a teacher at the high school one day.
Great.
Thank you. These are two of the best young ladies that you ever run across. I'll tell you, they're fine, outstanding ladies. They've contributed a whole lot to Central High School, the three years that they've been there, and we certainly appreciate what they've done for the program, not only with academics, but also for the athletic programs. Thank you, ladies. Y'all are welcome to leave if you'd like.
We won't make you stick around to the end.
That's not fair.
Thank you, ladies.
All right, at this point, I need a motion to approve the agenda and the minutes, the agenda as amended.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
And Mr. Cordell, any discussion? And let's start with Mr. Coon.
Aye.
Aye.
Henser.
Aye.
Jones. Matthews.
Aye.
I will vote aye. That passes 2-0, so. And for the record, we do have a quorum tonight. Ms. Peacock Hodge is not here tonight, so she had a conflict. We do have a quorum for the record, so the first item on the agenda is the director's contract. And this is, for all intents and purposes, is the same contract we approved last month with the changes that we removed the residency requirement for Coffee County, and we made a change to the start date of March 31st, just to make sure that Mr. Hargrove has coverage on his insurance. It doesn't affect the total payout and that type of thing, but it just helps him out a little bit, and it's like one day. So those are the only changes from the, from the contract form that we approved last month.
May.
Oh, April, I believe, or March. Was it March we approved it?
May 31st.
It'll be, oh, okay, I'm sorry. I stand corrected. I was, all right. So it will be, May 31st will be the start date, so, yes, thank you. Those are the only changes. And so I would need a motion to approve the contract with the revisions. And then if we approve this, then after the meeting, we will sign the contract, and Mr. Hargrove will sign the contract. We'll have to catch up with Ms. Hodge some day this week, but we'll do that, so. So I need a motion to approve the contract as modified.
Mr. Chairman, I might get motion.
Mr. Cordell.
I'll second.
And Mr. Gilli. All right, is there any discussion? The motion is to approve the contract as modified, so any, any discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
Under expenses, the expenses section, number one, the board shall pay the director a moving allowance not to exceed $10,000. Are we doing that?
I don't. I don't think he's moving.
Okay, so I was just curious if that needed to stay in there or?
We can strike that. Number two also. Yeah.
Yeah.
Three.
I mean, since you took the residency out, I mean.
Yeah, the temporary housing.
So to you, you made the motion.
If you want to strike it, I'm okay with that. I don't know if there's any point, but.
You know, the way it's written, it really doesn't make any difference if it stays in, but if the board is more comfortable with striking those things, so. Would you, okay?
I mean, those are, those are two moot points. Those are two moot points because at the board's discretion is in there. I mean, but, but if you want to clean it up, we could strike those two out. I mean, we'll just have to produce another document before he can sign it tonight. But those are, it's on record, we've made it on record that those are two moot points, so. Either way.
You can do that.
I can fix it and make it cleaner.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. So strike number one and two under expenses, correct?
Yes, please.
All right, so we would need to amend the motion to do that.
I'm okay with amending.
We would need an amended amendment, and we would have to vote on the amendment, and then.
I'll resecond that amendment.
What's that?
I'll second that amendment.
Okay. Mr. Cordell and Mr. Gilli, all right, so any further changes? All right, let's vote Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. Cordell.
Aye.
Ms. Hens.
Aye.
Ms. Henser.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That will be eight to nothing on the amendment, and then we go back to the main motion, which is to approve the contract, and that will be as modified by the amendment. So, Mr. Cordell.
Aye.
Ms. Hens.
Aye.
Ms. Henser.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Sarge, oh, no, Ms. Sarge is not here. Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That passes eight to zero. Okay, so we will just make those changes. It does clean it up, so, all right.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Okay, so the first one was to approve the contract, striking out number one and number two under expenses.
That was the amendment.
That was the amendment. Who made the first on that?
Same one.
It was a.
Both of you.
Both us, the same time.
It was the same, too, yeah.
So you got the second one, Mr. Gilli?
Mm-hmm, yeah. And on the amendment.
And both were eight to zero. All right, next item on the agenda is the MOU, and that's to you, Dr. Powell.
Yes, sir. Every three years, there's an MOU that comes up between the Board of Education and the Coffee County Educational Association, who is the representative of our, of the majority of our teachers in the school system. This MOU has basically things in it that, there were a 14, there was a 14-member team, seven school administrators, and seven staff members from various schools in the county. The MOU team brings in things that they would like to see taking place. They're basically, it goes back to the old negotiations process, except they don't call it that anymore. It's called collaborative conferencing, in which we agree upon things, and then the board has to approve that. Ms. Leslie Aron is the, I guess, the chief of the Teachers Association and was also the lead person on the, on the MOUs. You had a copy of that. That was, there was one MOU that was started in 2022, and it's a three-year contract with the board. This one would be, would be starting in 25, excuse me, 25 and go through 28. Is that right, Leslie? Okay. A lot of these things are already policies. A lot of them will become basically policies once the board approves them. There's things in here that deal with, there's only certain things that can be conferenced with, and a lot of them are working conditions and those type things. In your agendas you have there, that you have the dark print items are those that were worked through this year. The items that were worked through beginning back in '22 to '25 are in regular print, so to speak. So I hope you've taken those and, excuse me, looked at them. If you have any questions about them, when we had the conferencing, each one of these is gone over quite thoroughly from each person. We meet in here usually an hour and a half or so for, I guess, five or six meetings possibly. And each group, each person in that group has a right to add or take away from the original document that the conference, that the association brought into us. There has to be a majority vote by both groups, both administrators and the Teachers Association, in order for this to go into the collaborative conferencing contract that y'all will approve. Anything else, Leslie? I need to.
The only other thing is the, once we, you know, it takes a majority vote to get something in the MOU, and then the, once the language is written, it takes a unanimous vote to go into the MOU as written. So that means it was a unanimous vote between the teachers and the administrators.
And we are, the administrative team was composed of myself, Mr. Paul Pars, the high school principal, Dr. Jimmy Anderson, middle school, Dr. Adam Clark, elementary school, Ms. Leah Parsley from Deerfield Elementary. Who was the other one?
Angela Sellers.
Yes, Ms. Angela Sellers.
From Raider Academy. And Katrina Wright. Katrina Wright at the high school.
Katrina Wright, who is the assistant principal, an assistant principal at the high school. So all levels of our education system were involved in it, elementary, middle school, Raider Academy, and secondary. And I guess the floor is now open. Mr. Chairman, if you have any questions, either myself or Ms. Aron, one, we'll try to answer those for you.
Well, at this point, we would need a motion to approve the MOU.
Yes, sir. You would need to make a motion to approve the MOU, or, as I understand it, and I talked with Chuck Cagle the other day, Leslie, the board can, the old agenda items that are on there are, have already been voted in back 2022. old agenda items that are on there are, have already been voted in back twenty-two. The new agenda items, you can vote in all of those or parse them, if you want to take some of them out, you can do that. Generally speaking, it comes as a whole because the entire group voted unanimously to present these to the board, so they would be items that would, that would go into the MOU for about a three-year term. Now, there is a grievance procedure in it, I hope you read through that. What that means is if something happens, if something's going on in the MOU that, um, it's being violated, then the teachers, now, I'm not going to go through the whole process because it's, it's quite lengthy, but, uh, the bottom line will be if it gets back to the board on grievances, then you would be able to, have to be able to tell them why this particular item has not been done, uh, as such, or why it's not being enforced. And, uh, we talked about some things that, that are almost impossible, but everybody agreed that we'd try to work with them and go through them as we need to.
And.
So I guess the floor is open now for questions for either myself.
And just as clarification.
Motion first.
Mr. Cagle did, um, uh, approve the whole thing.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cagle told me that he was actually one of the main writers that originated this collaborative conferencing, conferencing process back when it began, so he was very familiar with it. He has, does have a copy of it, he has read it, and he sees nothing in there that would be violation of the law that deals with the collaborative conferencing process.
All right, so.
So I guess you need a motion now to approve, and then go from there.
You have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve it, the MOU as written.
Okay, Ms. Jones?
I'll second that.
Mr. Hanser, seconds, all right. So the motion is to approve the MOU as the collaborative conferencing, MOU as written. Do we have discussion?
Ms. Chair.
Mr. Gilli.
The grievance procedures that you were just talking about.
Yes, sir.
And, and there's a couple of others in there. The difference between the bold, the bold writing and the, not bold writing, is that new versus the old items?
Correct, the bold, the bold writing is new.
Bold writing is new, the.
Did Chuck compare versus our policies, kind of, some of these things to make sure they're kind of aligned and?
Yes, sir, he's looked at them, they're all, they're all legal under the law at this point in time.
Okay, so, but, but these, these, the grievance procedures posted in the MOU align with our policy?
Basically, yes, because it's, of course, the first line is to talk with your immediate supervisor, whether that be the principal or your supervisor, and then if it, uh, doesn't get clarified there, then it would go up to the Director of Schools. If it doesn't get clarified there, then it would come to the board. If you have a grievance, it can't be settled at the lowest level, and it's like our grievance procedure now, Robert, for all practical purposes.
Well, you got, you got more steps through ours.
Yeah, this adds some timelines to it, is what it basically does, yes.
Getting to, you know, in, in our current policy, getting to the Ethics Committee and then coming with a recommendation to the board, stuff of that nature when your grievances, you know, so there is some differences there, but as long as, I mean, if, if, if Chuck aligned them, that's our board attorney, so.
And this, and this grievance procedure is just against the MOU, not against, um, like, the board policy, like, your, your working, um, employment opportunities or, uh, sexual harassment, things like those, that's a different set of grievance procedures.
So, so, Mr. Gilli, what, what's here won't be the same as our policy.
Yeah.
Because it's two different parts. This is only on the MOU, whereas the policy is dealing with the system-wide, any grievance that might come up.
That's kind of, well, that's kind of the way I look at a grievance policy in our system.
Yeah, there, there's really no.
That's from a kindergarten teacher to anybody.
I guess there's, there's no grievance committee per se in the MOU.
Yeah.
Um, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be like a grievance for a board member or for an employee.
I just, I just don't, I don't have an issue, I mean, you know, this is definitely something we gotta, we gotta roll with. I just, I feel like a lot of things should align more.
Yes, but, and I, for the most part, I think.
If Chuck has been through it from one end to the other.
With exceptions, some timelines in there, it pretty well follows our, uh, grievance polit, grievance procedure now. Yes, sir.
So instead of, you know, the, the grievance policy with the, through the board would be more like Human Resources Department, where this is, this has been a violation of the MOU under the working conditions, and you would try to, uh, alleviate those with your immediate supervisor, your, um, grade-level leader, your principal, your school-level principal, the director of schools, you try to do that at your lowest level first, whereas if you, um, violated a policy like a sexual harassment policy, you would want to go directly to HR and do it that, go that direction. That's a separate, um, procedure is the, is the difference.
Your conflicts here only deal with, or your, your grievance is only deal with what's in the MOU, has nothing to do with the law necessarily, uh, as such, and most of the policies, the, the information in MOU does not conflict with any laws of any kind, as far as harassment and so forth is concerned.
I, I just had one question, um, where it says that no teacher shall be required to check emails outside of working hours, which I agree with that.
Okay.
But is, do you have a method, is there a method in our school system that if there was an emergency situation, that, do they, do their phones or how would a teach, I mean, I'm just trying to think, how would a teacher know if they needed to know something after school hours?
So originally, we, the teachers had written that as, um, no teacher will be, like, disciplined for not checking emails or text messages, and we decided to take text messages and calls out of that language because there are times when principals need to get in touch with teachers, whether, are you going to be at school tomorrow, you've been out for three days, are, are you still sick? Or, uh, school's out, you know, we understand that there are times when principals and administrators need to communicate with us, and so we did take that language out. So it's just the school email, school, um, uh, the, the drive that we use, those are the things that we're not required to check off hours, just while we're in the building, or just during the school, working school hours.
Other questions, discussion?
I have a couple of things. Um, a few things kind of grabbed my attention as I scrolled through, it's really long, so, um, but, uh, one of them was admission into sporting events and teacher use of cell phones.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, have, will all of these changes be presented to our staff members, or have they already been briefed on this, or?
So, at the beginning of the year, um, well, part of the MOU process is that the school board has to make this available to all teachers, so there's a spot on the HR, um, page on the Coffey County Schools website where every teacher can access it.
Okay.
It is also supposed to be, um, disseminated in our first week of school back, so the, the fir, that's your first days back, here's a copy of the MOU and what it says.
Okay.
Um, the practice of teachers being allowed to attend sporting events for free has been a practice we've had for years.
Yeah.
We've just never had it in writing anywhere, and so now it's in writing and that we can say, um, you know, people don't get, um, not discriminated against, but, um, uh, how do we know you're a teacher, you know, well, I have my badge, and it's here in writing that we get into sporting events for free, as long as it's not a T double S double A tournament. And their immediate family.
The, the, getting into the basketball games, football games, baseball and so forth, uh, some of those, um, admissions are, are administered by the T double S double A, which we have no control over.
Yes, right.
Uh, but as long as it's a, it's a regular scheduled basketball, football, baseball, softball game and so forth, then the badges would be accepted.
And that, that admission has already been a practice that we've had for as long as I've been in Coffey County.
And there, there is an allocation given to Central High School and Coffey Middle School, uh, to compensate for the fact that there's no, that, that teachers are, are getting in free, so to speak.
Yes.
So they are compensated in some way from that.
About this much.
And, and immediate family members as well, so, you know, small children.
As long as that staff member is with the immediate family member, is that correct?
Yes, they cannot give their badges to their daughters or their sons or their husbands and so forth.
They have to be with the staff member.
Yes, they have to all come in together.
Whoever's names on the badge has to be with the people that come in.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's.
And then the, the cell phone policy, again, it would be, it would be, um, disseminated in the first week of school.
Okay, gotcha.
And we did discuss with, uh, Mr. Cagle that, uh, this, this language will align with our proposed, uh, policy that we are probably going to approve tomorrow, huh? So, um, so, yeah, that's, that's all aligned, because we did ask, did ask him that, so. Further discussion? Okay, um, we are ready to vote to the, the, uh, motion on the floor is to approve the MOU as written. Ms. Yench.
Aye.
Mr. Hanser.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. Cordell.
Aye.
And I will vote aye, that passes eight to zero, so. Next item up is the Chief Mechanic Job Description, Mr. Morris.
Thank you for joining us, I know you have a county commissioners meeting, so quickly, got the county commission meeting. My name's Tim Morris, I'm the Director of Parentation at Coffey County Schools. I don't ever get to see y'all because I'm usually sitting in a seat. Uh, I'm director slash bus driver. Uh, the way our hiring has gone and with availability of, of bus drivers coming to us, it's very sparse. So right now, I'm four hours a day in a bus seat. Uh, then I'm in my office, we're doing videos, discipline and things like that. The, I have three great mechanics, but I need, I, I drew this up to have somebody oversee the shop, to be responsible for it, to be able to order parts, to be able to talk with people, to be able to talk with salesmen, come talk with me, uh, go through, we carry buses out now, I have a bus that's twenty years old, we use extended youth service on buses, try to save Coffey County money, down to taxpayers down on that end down there, and I toot our horn down there. Those buses are, are, uh, they get checked twice a year, they're inspected twice a year, so they're, they're safe, they're everything else, they're just saving Coffey County money by not getting rid of our buses. I need somebody that I can put in charge of the shop, to turn that shop completely over to them, and let them run the shop under me, put us work together, because many, many days, there's nobody in the office, there's one mechanic left in the, in the building, and the rest of us are driving. So when we get back, it's in a huge flurry of trying to catch up. And like Mr. Parsley said, if our students move, they're moving with us. Tomorrow I'll have ten trips, Thursday I'll have fifteen trips, and that's a bunch of buses moving at one time, so you're trying to do all that, and I, I just don't have the time, nor do I have the experience of ordering parts for a Cummins motor. It's like I told Ms. Yench, you'd rather me drive it than fix it, so I have brought forth, and that's the truth. You don't want me working on one, I'll drive them any day of the year, but you sure don't want me working on one. But we drafted this, I went through some other, uh, school systems with this, sort of a flat-out head mechanic, what his responsibilities or her responsibilities could be, uh, and if you see fit, I would ask you to just think about this, uh, maybe create this position to where we would have somebody in charge that would ultimately come back to me and then meet y'all, so that would help us out a whole lot.
All right, so, uh, the job description is here in your packet, um, I would need a motion to approve the, uh, this is the job description, so, um, uh, I would need a motion to approve the job description.
So move.
So, move, I'll second. Mr. Gilli and Mr. Cordell. All right, so the motion is to approve the, uh, the job description for, uh, Chief Mechanic. Any discussion on this?
Now, I'm sorry, go ahead. Are we approving the job description? Are we approving going ahead and hiring someone in this position? What exactly?
We, the board approves the job description, that, then the hiring is up to Mr. Morris and the director, so.
Okay, all right.
And I don't know if, if your policy, like, in the county commission, if you have a salary committee, if they would set it or, or what, that, you know, that could be studied, uh, on that.
The way, the way I read this, this job description, that's, that's a supervisor position.
Yes.
So, they would, you, we've got a supervisor pay based off of years of experience, that it is what it is.
Okay.
But if you can cover it within your budget, and you already have those means, and you don't have to come to the board for any monies or a budget amendment, then.
Okay.
Hurrah. Correct?
Well, I think everyone knows.
Is that the way, is that the way I understand this? Is that the way I understand this, is if we approve this job description and he's got the means to fill it without a budget amendment or a further request from us, then it's there.
Probably a question for, I see, I see April is tuning up her mic, so.
Normally, I understand that normally it's not in there, but if, just by case, otherwise, if he has to come back here, then we can cross that bridge at that time.
The way we normally take care of this is it usually goes to compensation committee to decide if a position needs to be created. Right now, what's on here is the job description. The board has to approve a job to, to, to create the job, uh, so if the board chooses to create the position, then there also needs to be what the pay's going to be. Uh, there are different parts to the pay, there's different, different things to look at, uh, so that's something that needs to be looked at. In my opinion, what we normally do is through the compensation committee. So i- if it, if you're basically just doing the job description as of right now, the motion is, uh, but then after that, then it needs to be taken to the compensation committee. Do we need the position? How much is the position going to be paid for if, if this board decides to create the position? That's what we've done in the past.
So, so you'd still have to go to the, to the compensation committee, even if he has the funding within his own budget currently?
Yes.
We don't have a current pay structure for that type of position.
Okay.
And then, um, also, when I budgeted that.
Set up via the Transportation Department.
Right, so when I budgeted that line, the mechanics are on a line all by theirself, and so any line that is, that needs to be adjusted has to go through a budget amendment because I can't, I can't do a budget transfer.
Okay.
So I would have to do a budget amendment, that would have to come to the board.
But this, this is a fully new position that is not currently, we, we don't currently have it, so that, that's the reason why it would definitely need to go before the board.
My question is, you have three, you have three mechanics, and my question is, this is someone else?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, it will be one of the three.
So would you need more than those three?
No, ma'am.
Well, that's what I, that's my point.
No, ma'am, I just need somebody in charge.
So it's really not, it's just an increase in what they'd be getting paid as a supervisor.
Well, then it would put, the buck would stop with them.
Right, and you're not, it's not another.
No, ma'am, it will not be another mechanic, no, ma'am. The three bodies that are there, they will be there, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Now, one concern I have is, will this be a posted position? Because anything new has to be posted.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and it'll be out there one week, two weeks. When it's created, after it's created, after it goes through all these committees, yes, ma'am, it will be posted, it'll be on the website.
I think even Thunder Radio reported it six days.
But Ms. Yench brought a good question on that, because if it's going to be a posted position, you already have three mechanics, you can't bring in and open it up to anybody. Right now, you're only ha, keeping with three mechanics, it's only going to be open to three mechanics to go for the, the supervisory position, so that, that's a little tricky, I, I'm not sure how we would work that, but, but it does create some question there.
To me, it looks like you're promoting someone to a supervisory position. I mean, that's, that's the way to go about it.
Yes, ma'am.
But if the job is posted.
And we approve, we would have to approve that, that, you know, the.
That position, yes, ma'am.
Where the money's coming from and the increase in salary, but that would be the only way to do it, otherwise you're going to have people applying, and we don't have a three positions.
No, yeah, it would have to come within, within, yeah, so.
So if the job is posted for six days, out on the, are we not posting the job, is that what?
I think that's what, Ms., the way I just heard Ms. Jones.
Well, that's the way I'm looking at it.
I would promote them.
Okay.
Okay.
But you've got to have a job description, and that's what we're here to do, is prove this tonight. You've got to have a job description, even if you promote it.
Then I will come back, I will come back before you again, yes, sir.
So on this one, it doesn't have to be posted, correct?
If you're promoting someone, that's, that, to me, that's no different than, uh, someone adding a, a supplement to somebody's salary up here at the central office.
Okay.
And, and giving them extra duties, and the board has to prove that, of course.
That's a good point.
Well, and I, I understand also that there's, um, that, uh, at least one of the mechanics down there has some question on the number of years of experience, is impacting his pay?
Well, and, and there's no way to prove it because the person that they worked for has deceased and those files have been destroyed, so it, there's no paper proof of those years of experience.
I got some. Only individual, only individual you're talking about, because I've paid, I've paid the boy.
Okay.
I remember, that's who did my, my work. I mean, I know for a fact in two thousand and three, I had thirteen semis, and I know I mean, I know for a fact in two thousand and three, I had thirteen semis, and I know exactly who done the work on my semi.
I just don't know if HR will take that, that, that's the thing, I'm trying to stay above board legal, I don't want anything to say Tim Morris is trying to do, anything hoodwink it. I would like to have somebody over the whole shop and, and let them run it, and go from there.
So we would need a letter from you, and then, and then Dr. Powell would have to approve that.
I probably got cancelled checks and the calls to the, to the location and whatever, so.
We would like need specific dates and all of that, and then we, Dr. Powell would approve that, we could, as long as we have, so we get audited based on years of experience for classified employees. And so we try to keep everything, like all of their years in their file. And so as long as we have a letter to back that up and the directors approved it, that would be how that would work.
I'd be glad to do that.
Okay, Mr. Hanser.
I believe according to TSBA, that the board can create a job and create the, the salary for that position. According to TSBA, am I not, is that not correct?
It sounds correct, yes, that's.
Via the compensation, via the compensation committee, yeah, and with a recommendation to the main board, but yes, in a nutshell.
Can that happen tonight, or does this have to go before?
No, I think right now we just do the job description, and then I think compensation committee will hear this first and send a recommendation to the board. Obviously, the board doesn't have to even approve the recommendation from the compensation committee, but nine times out of ten, that's what's gonna happen, so.
This, the new salary, if you approve it, would not start until July one.
Anyways, yeah, I didn't.
So we got time to go through it. So, yeah, really what we're doing is we're approving the job position, just, you know, like we did on, on a lot of other things, we approve the position and then you take the next steps with the salary.
The position or the description?
The description, I'm sorry, yeah.
Is that satisfactory, Mr. Morris?
Yes ma'am, oh yes.
Okay.
It's a start.
It's the first step.
I'll be back.
Well, it sounds like if Robert can get those years in for him, he'll automatically get some pay raise now, so that.
I'd be glad to do that.
I think, I think we can dance around that one, so.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you, Tim, appreciate you.
Yes sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim, appreciate your service.
All right, so the motion on the floor is to approve the job description for the Chief Mechanic. Any further discussion? If not, Mr. Hanser.
Yes, I do.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
Mr. Gillie.
Aye.
Mr. Cordell.
Aye.
Ms. Yinch.
Aye.
And I will vote aye, that passes eight to zero. We're on a trend here tonight. All right.
Don't say that.
Next.
We'll be here all night now.
No, 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 no.
Now it should go much quicker now, so. School fees, Dr. Powell.
Yes sir, each year the, the law provides for school systems to set student fees. The board has to approve those each year. The high school will probably be the school that has most of your fees for the various subjects that they have. You have a few in the elementary school, but they're very few and far between, but the board has to approve these fees each year. When the board approves them, they have to be put on our webpage, which they are on there now if you haven't looked. But these would be the fees for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Okay, so do I have a motion to pre- approve the student fee request for two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six?
I saw moved.
Mr. Cordell, second.
I'll second it.
Ms. Yinch seconded that, okay, the motion is to approve student fee request for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Gillie.
Can anybody give an idea of what the total amount of this money totals to that we're seeking? And we require of our parents and our students?
I think April, there, there's a set, there's a set amount that each school gets based on their student enrollment. I think we can give you that number, yes sir.
So I don't have like by school, like I wouldn't, wouldn't know, like it would be based on what, I guess, the high school students, like what students are enrolled in, what sections and. But we do give fee waiver funds to help the students that can't pay.
I understand, but I'm just.
As far as total for a parent, I think it would vary because of kinda what the, the students enrolled in.
Mr. Gillie, to, to me, I'm feeling like the school lunches on this issue.
I think Mr. Gillie's asking a different question, I think there's two different things being discussed. One is fees that are, these are the fees that are being requested that can be charged. The other is how much fee waiver that each school receives. These are two different things.
No, no, I mean, we can, we can add this number to that, but I'm, I'm talking about when you charge these, these parents and these students, these amounts of monies right here. What is the annual gross number of that that comes in?
Right, and, and what, I think Dr. Powell, not speaking for him, but I think he was talking about the fee waiver fund that we receive from the state. Which is two different, two different things.
That's fine, stack it with it, but we're asking to charge this amount of money right here. You don't get fee waiver to cover these monies, this is what you're asking the parents and students to pay.
Yeah.
Actually, the fee waiver money, if a student cannot pay the fees.
Well, it'll, it'll cover some of those, but, and that, my question, and my only question was how much?
Right.
Monies do we average, and I know it's gonna be hard to get a definite number, but just to get, I'm, I'm after a ballpark here of. What kind of monies do you bring in? Paul, what kind of monies do you bring in?
I can come up and speak on this, but I'm not gonna be able to give a number, but I can, I, I'm glad to explain why I don't think I can. Can I come up and talk about this just a little bit?
You may.
We get through the, our funding from the state, we get a certain amount of money from the state for fee waivers. And then the, the system can add some to that if they would like. And then the schools present this information that this is what they're gonna charge for these particular programs. And then if a student can't pay, then that's what this fee waiver money is for, Mr. Parsley, go from there.
I, I, yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, so, so, and I'm just gonna give some more context. So, you know, you all have the list of school fees that we're requesting be charged for various classes for next year. Of course, every student is gonna have a different class schedule, which means that every student really would, would owe a different amount for their school fees for next year. What happens, for instance, if, and, and I don't recall the, the amounts of these fees off the top of my head, although I'm the one that typed them in there. Let's say the science lab fee is five dollars. If a student is in Ms. Sheila Haley's biology class, then the student's gonna bring that five dollar fee into her, and then from there, it's gonna make its way to the main office, to our bookkeeper, where it is then deposited into the biology department account. The money doesn't go into one account that would be for all school fees. It, literally, the money is going into many accounts, and they are all various school accounts for departments. I, I just, it would be, I, I don't, I don't know.
Is there not a, is there not a audit trail? Is there not an audit trail to, these, these are, these are received funds, I don't care what account it is, you still have to audit every single account?
So, yeah, yes, absolutely, so there's gonna be, there's gonna be an account of this ten dollars was turned in today.
Yeah.
It's gonna be two students based upon the science example I, I gave. Yes, there is gonna be that. I, I'm simply saying, I think it's a monumental task to add that up. Now, it may be simpler than I realize based upon the accounting program, because I'm not familiar with the accounting program. Ms. April, is it, is it feasible to?
I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Total that's collected?
So like, we could do that, but like it would be, like, so you'd take all your biology students times five dollars, and that would be your biology fee.
But, but of course, we don't get all that, are you asking how much we actually get?
That's what I'm asking, is how much does the high school raise annually to cover these kinda things that parents or people bring in to all these different accounts? Does it equal a hundred and fifty thousand a year, a hundred and eighty thousand a year-ish?
Okay.
I could, we could easily look that up. Ms. Martin probably can easily look that up.
I mean, I get, I get you get thirty-five thousand dollars or forty thousand dollars from the state to go towards this for the people that can't afford or.
Mr. Gillie, what, what is the, the point of the line of questioning, I guess, is?
What do you mean, what is the point of line of questioning? It's, it's very simple. Why have these fees if we're sitting here with twenty-two million dollars in a fund balance? And can pay a hundred thousand extra dollars shot to the high school, middle school, ninth grade? I'm looking at it in the same aspect as free lunches for everybody.
That's what I thought you were getting at, but I just wanted to make that clear, so.
So I was just trying to get some answers on that, so that helped me with my decision if I wanted to vote for this or not.
If, if I could, could add, th- this item does relate to the next item on the agenda, which is the fee waivers. And I'll give you an example, the high school received just over thirteen thousand dollars this year for fee waiver money, and I don't remember the specific amount, but it's a little over thirteen thousand dollars. I can tell you that over half of that amount this year will go to pay for caps and gowns for students that receive free and reduced. So, you know, that leaves, you know, ma- maybe five thousand dollars. At the end of the year, what is left there is, in, you know, some, some years, it's very little, I mean, it's really not a lot, no matter how you look at it. But at the end of the year, it is divided up based upon the number of teachers in each department. For instance, if our science department has nine teachers, and our math department has twelve teachers, basically, we add up our total number of teachers. And a percentage of that leftover fee waiver money goes to each department based upon the number of teachers in the department. What we're accustomed to seeing at the end, at the end of the year is that a, a department might get two hundred dollars, a department might get two hundred and twenty dollars. And that money, if you, if you think of it this way, that money ends up helping to pay for those very supplies the next year that we requested school fees for. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, I know, and that's, this is all I'm gonna say, Mr. Chair, I know that exactly what you're saying, exactly how you busted it up, I've listened to it for five years, I'm just asking, how much money do we bring in from parents and these students in our system?
So I've messaged Amy, and she's, she can look it up, but because there's so many different accounts and different departments, it would take her just a little bit of time to come up with that number.
Okay.
That's all, that's all, and I don't want it right now, I guess, because I'm not, I'm not, I'm tired of putting so much burden on our students and our parents and our community and our donators and our supporters and our boosters and whatever.
Are there any other questions for me, I mean, any, anybody want to clarify anything on what I've said?
Mr. Hanser.
I guess, trying to clarify for our people at home, what these funds are for, and a lot of people, I, I know a lot of people gets calls, what are these things that we're talking about? The funds that we're talking about are for cosmetology, we're wanting to charge ten dollars for materials and supplies. CNA, I guess it's a certified nurse assistant education, thirty-five dollars for picture badge, professional liability insurance. That one's the ones I've got a question for, why are we paying for liability insurance? Why are we having, they having to pay for that? Does anybody know?
Oh.
Nope.
That's, that's a good question, I mean, why are we paying professional liability insurance for a CPR card? Why are we, you know, why are we having to pay for that?
So our students in CNA class are going into one of our local healthcare facilities essentially to work for a couple of hours a day. That, 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 that's the reason. Now, as far as given more specific detail, you, you know, they're, they're, they're providing service at a, at a local healthcare facility.
I think the answer he's after, Mr. Hanser's after is, our insurance doesn't go.
Oh, well, okay.
Doesn't go out of the school system, correct?
When you go to work for someplace, they usually furnish you a badge.
This is more volunteer, I think.
But if you're volunteering, well, okay, that is like they would furnish you, that's thirty-five dollars if this, even this person's gonna have to pay for a place that, that, they're, we're volunteering for it, and they're making money for it, and I, I just.
Right.
Large animal science, twenty dollars for vet supplies for shop materials, supplies, I mean, it goes on and on, there's several here. Digital electronics, five dollars for wired UPS drives. Visual arts, five dollars for cleaning supplies. I mean, just letting people know at home what we're, here's eighty dollars for if you're gonna be, you know, getting a training program for musicians guide for, to music. I mean, it just, it goes on and on, that.
Well, getting back to what Mr. Gillie was saying, I, I, I think is instead of nickel and diming people with all these fees, would we be better off taking fund balance and just making the fees go away? And any opinion on that?
Oh, I'll say, I, I, I'll go on the record saying I have absolutely no issue with the school board, you know, providing the funding for these items that we're requesting school fees for. It, it's, it's just a simple matter of, the department doesn't receive enough funding to pay for all of the items that are needed, and so these are the ones that our teachers, our teachers request money for. We would love to have all of it funded, so yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess we're not gonna decide that tonight, but something to look at.
Can I make some comments, please? Okay, so I, I was looking over it, and of course, the first one on the list is a social studies class fee for paper, Kleenex, folders, pens, you know. I just wanna say, as a parent, as a taxpayer, and even as a board member, I'm definitely not in favor for this. This is no offense to our teachers, I just feel like my first reaction is, that's what our tax dollars are for. This is public school, some students are gonna pay it and some can't. I know teachers will continue to ask for the fees for weeks on end, and I, I don't like to see students embarrassed for not bring, being able to bring that in. I don't see that these fees would generate enough funding to really make that much of a difference, especially if every student is not bringing it in. I personally, I've talked to quite a few teachers about the amount of money that is allotted to them at the beginning of the year for classroom supplies. And most teachers will tell you that it is not enough. I think it is around, correct me if I'm wrong, two hundred dollars a teacher.
Yes, that's correct.
That's probably not enough, may not even be all that close, but I would rather see, and, and we could do it however, but I would rather see teachers be allotted a bigger allowance of money to spend on their classroom rather than hit up the parents and the students for these five, ten, twenty, eighty dollar fees. As a parent, it is really hard at the beginning of the school year to pay all of the fees that you're hit with. It, it's, it's everything from, and I'm not saying that this is, this shouldn't be happening, but, you know, every club that your child is in, Beta, FBLA, every club that they're involved in, they pay a fee. Not to mention just the school supplies to start the school year. Science lab fees, I mean, you know, I know there are kids that are paying science lab fees at the end of the year, and they never go to the science lab for the first experiment all year. I know that has happened. I just don't wanna put this burden on our parents any longer, I don't know if this has passed kinda by default in all the years past, or what, but I'm just not in favor of it myself. Cause I just believe, as a public school, as a taxpayer, our tax dollars should cover this.
So Dr. Powell, what would happen if we referred this to next month and then looked at the possibility of using, getting a, an accurate number and looking at if we could use fund balance to pay some of these fees?
Yes sir, I think we can, it's, it's not something that's urgent, because these will not be collected until next school year anyway, so it's not something that, that has to be done at this meeting.
Okay.
And we can get the number of, of how much all this brings into each school or each department, I think. And then go from there with it. Now, the state does give us some fee waiver money that, that's distributed out, and, and it's like I said a while ago, the, the teachers get two hundred dollars a year from the school system to buy supplies, and does that buy all the supplies, probably not over a month worth for the most part, particularly elementary schools. But I can't tell you where this came about or why it came out, it's been in existence, I know, for thirty-five or forty years, in all honesty. Because we used to have to collect them in elementary school from time to time.
I'd like to make a comment too, in support of teachers.
I know as a former teacher myself, you thought that's all you had was the two hundred dollars. Teachers are the, will not ask for, for funds, and sometimes they don't go to their principal, and I guess, I guess you could tell us, there's instructional funds provided for each, each school
Yes.
that could be used for some of this, and I think that that's how we kinda got into this, uh, rut, you might say, of, of asking for it, because teachers do not realize that there's money available for them, and besides that two hundred dollars that they're given. And, um, and, and back to the fee waiver, I applaud any principal in this school system that has zero at the end of the year, because that's what the fee waiver money is for, and I know that there's a way of finding a way to use it, because we have too many students in our school system that would qualify for those, and there's ways of using that money and not having it put back in the coffers, because that's what it's for. Uh, but I'm, I'm all for, for helping teachers as much as we can, but like Dr. Powell said, this goes back years. There's always been fees for kids, whether it's, you know, in the, years ago, it was just a workbook or something, but now it's gotten more.
So would you like to see us take this off the agenda and kick it?
I'm just making a.
I mean, Mr. Cordell would have to withdraw his motion in order to do that.
Well, if we can help, Penny, you know, if we can help offset it.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment, please?
There, yeah, yes, sir.
I wanna thank Ms. Matthews and Mr. Gillie for bringing this up. I didn't know this was going on for all these years. I knew, and it's not right and fair for our teachers to have to dig down into their pockets month after month after whatever to buy supplies, whatever, so I appreciate y'all bringing this in.
And also too, it's kind of, to me, it's, uh, it's not very professional to get on Facebook and ask for, you know, the community for the supplies and things like that, and it, it really gives the wrong impression that we're not providing the needed money.
Everybody has, everybody's had great points to add to, but, you know, like I say, I just started this in the aspect of utilizing the taxpayer money better instead of putting burden so much on these kids and these parents. That, that's, that's where, that's where my, uh, concern there is on that, and I, you know, I appreciate all the other points and comments.
Amen.
Can I just point out, like, can I just make a few little comments about the funding that we do provide? Because I just, I wanna be, I wanna be informative as can be to you guys. So we do give the two hundred dollars, um, per teacher, and then they also get a seventy-five dollar, um, that comes with their two hundred dollars that goes into like a pooled fund where they can buy toners and, um, additional things. We buy all the paper up here, even if a school runs out, we purchase, they'll, they request papers, so we have a paper budget that we pay for all the paper, each department. Um, so like at the high school, middle school, and Raider Academy, each department gets a certain amount of funding. So like, science department would get this amount, um, math department would get this amount, so that's provided. And then, um, at the elementary level, we provide it, like, um, kindergarten gets an amount of money, and then first through fifth gets a, a certain amount of money. So we do already, we may need to change those allotments, but we do already, already have a structure set up um, to where we fund departments and fund certain grade, grade levels at the elementary.
We could be looking at a simple increase to those lines to cover these items.
We could, yes, but then we also need to think about, um, fee waiver, and if that just completely goes away, or do we give the high school funding to pay for those cap and gowns for those fee waiver kids that, you know, that can't pay for their cap and gowns?
Well, yeah, you're prob, if you don't use it, or you don't have the request for those, uh, free and reduced, then yes, you're probably gonna lose it, I would say.
But we could take that plus, I mean, we could take that and build it into our departmental funds and, you know, increase more if we need to. But, uh, we would also want to not forget about that expense that comes at the end of the year.
I, I have a question. Are all those departmental funds used up every year? That would be what you need to look at.
They are required.
Being used up, we're showing we're using it and, and needing it. If, if there's money that's not there, then we need to increase it.
They, we require them to spend, we require them to spend all of the money, and so we review that each year, and if they do not spend the money, they send it back up here, so that's one of our things. So like, we always make sure they spend it all, because that's our thing. You can't roll it over. If you don't spend it, we're, we're gonna ask for it back, and they don't wanna give it back, so even down to the penny, we make them spend all of it.
Okay.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
I know this may be a totally separate agenda item that we might need to talk about at another time, but I would like for us to consider raising that two hundred dollars. Um, because I have talked to a lot of teachers that do, uh, buy supplies out of their pockets for their classrooms. Most of them do, because the two hundred dollars doesn't get them past the first quarter. And I just feel like, and maybe we can't address it tonight, but if, if we could discuss that and maybe look at that a little closer and think about increasing that amount, um, maybe doubling it, I don't know, um, or just checking in to see what is really needed for our teachers so that they can have enough money, enough funding to buy the supplies for their classroom, or at least be really close.
Ms. Matthews, that two hundred dollars has probably been in existence since the mid nineteen sixties.
Wow.
Really? And we haven't changed it?
When I was in a classroom, as a classroom teacher, uh, in the late sixties, I got two hundred dollars
Wow.
for my account, so to speak.
So it has not changed with inflation?
I give you a reason why that two hundred dollars hasn't been increased.
We, we could even let Mr. Shores bid out, you know, truckloads of paper, truckloads of pencils.
Really, and buying bulk even, but yeah.
We do buy bulk paper and.
Increase it.
And stuff, so.
Well, we're charging for paper right here.
We, we are.
More the merrier.
Also, like, you know, any family can turn in a fee waiver form, so they can sign it, and then they're waived for all fees, so that, there's another.
Right.
Yeah.
But if we took this off the agenda and reconsidered it next month, where we can look at.
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and say, you know, since we've had the discussion on it, and it's not gonna get resolved tonight, I don't think we've got a lot of more agenda items. I would like to postpone this until the next board meeting.
Right.
And get some information from, if you have any information, anything you want us to find out, let myself know, or Mr. Shores.
I think we need to get the numbers.
And we'll try to get those numbers for you, but I would, I would suggest that we just postpone it till the next board meeting.
Okay, well, we do have a motion on the floor, so Mr. Cordell would have to withdraw his motion.
I withdraw my motion.
Ms. Hinch, do, do you agree?
Yes, I agree.
All right, so this has been deferred, so no action. All right, next up, speaking of fee waivers, Dr. Powell.
Um, actually, I guess this next one also needs to be deferred also, because it's dealing with fee waivers, not.
I got a question about that.
This, this is the one that we were talking about, that was the, the money that each school receives each year. This is the money that is left over, that was not used, uh, that, that this Jones was as well talking about. And as you could tell, the only ones that had money left over was the high school and Hickson Elementary. And basically to zero out your books, am I right in saying that this?
That's correct. They're not allowed to roll any funds over.
So then this actually needs to be taken place and approved by the board if you wish, so that they can close out their books for the summer, and if it's not, it's gonna create, or they're gonna send it back to you though.
So they have to send it, so when they go through their audit, the auditor reviews to make sure they've spent all of their funds, and if they do not spend the funds, they have to send them back to central office, so, um, they're not allowed to roll over without board approval.
And the next board meeting is after school is already out, so the, the bookkeepers are already closing their books up. So this one really needs to be taken care of tonight, so they can close out their books. And if you wish to put it back in their accounts, they could do so. Otherwise, they need to write, they're gonna have to write a check back up here, uh, when they're finished. And I, I prefer going into their accounts than coming back up here, in my opinion, but that's.
There's only two that have ending balances anyway, right? All right, do we have a motion to approve the, uh, the fee waiver, permission to roll into general school funds?
I would recommend that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Mr. Coon? Okay, um, and Mr. Cordell? Any discussion on this?
So we had two that had money left over that they didn't spend on.
That is correct, yes.
Mr. Chair, if you'll look on there too, it's on the high school. He asked it for the money that he has left. He wants to divide that between his departments there, so it would be zeroed out.
And that's what, uh, Mr. Parsley was talking about. This would be back to the departments, spread out, depending on how much money it is and how many teachers, correct?
Without explaining that, without explaining that like you did, we wouldn't know, based on this sheet.
It goes to the individual teachers for those supplies that were requested, really. It's just they're getting it later. Uh, and it doesn't go to their pockets. It goes for the supplies that are purchased by.
And I would assume that Dr. Crabtree could probably do the same thing with her four oh four, third fifty six.
So just start with four hundred and four more dollars next year.
No, they can't do that. It's gotta be used.
So what are we doing? Are we, we're gonna buy stuff right now?
It will roll into her general fund. So if you approve this, it will roll into her. She's not set up kinda like the hi- the high school. She doesn't have the different departments. She just basically has restricted in general fund, so this will roll in her general fund, and she can use it, um, however she needs to use it for next school year.
What, what this means, that money that's left over, that means that those schools did not have the kids to ask for fee waivers that, that, to use it for some reason. So that's what's happening, is that's one of the monies left. For some reason, they did not use it to waive fees, and, and maybe there wasn't a need. And, uh, so in the past, it's always gone, you know, we have voted for it to go back to the schools. But like I said before, I think it's really good if you don't have any money left, uh, because it has been used for those kids. And I know there's stipulations on how you can use them, and that may be part of the, you know, part of the reason that some schools still have, those two have some left, but, uh, get pretty creative, though. I can when I spend money and making it, making it work for them.
All right, um, further discussion? If not, uh, the motion on the floor is fee waiver funds, permission to roll into general school funds to approve that. Um, Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Hinch?
Hi.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
I will vote aye. That passes eight two zero. All right, next up is we have our hardworking public servant, Mr. Randy Damewood. We are considering a wave, um.
How about we move this from the agenda tonight?
I think the board unofficially.
He provides our.
I think the board unofficially agreed that, that Mr. Damewood would be paid a stipend. I think right now, the problem, the concern is, not a problem, the concern is, how much do you wanna pay him per hour for working as he does, setting up all baby stuff and what have you for board meetings and all the other meetings that he has to do?
Was it that on?
We, we discussed it, but we did not do a formal motion, so we determined we needed to do a formal motion to approve that, so.
Since it's a stipend, uh, Mr..
Yeah, we went back and checked. We did not actually.
Wasn't in there to start with.
There's not been any action with this yet.
Except.
That y'all wanted to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we said we wanted to do it, but we never formally voted on it. We determined we needed to do that, so. Um, and, um, I will say that, um, basically, we had looked at thirty dollars an hour. I got a text from Ms. Hodges that, that, uh, who couldn't be here tonight, who recommends forty dollars an hour, because Mr. Damewood works very hard getting our YouTube show out to our YouTube fans, and, and, uh, uh, he does put in some really long hours, because some of these meetings run, run really long.
This is any hours he uses beyond his regular school day.
Right.
Working with the.
Right, right.
Board and audio and video stuff.
So do you have any recommendations, Dr. Powell?
I don't know if he's worth forty dollars an hour or not.
I think your mic just got cut off.
If you have, if you have to put up with him all the time, he's not worth forty dollars an hour. I'll recommend forty dollars an hour if the board would agree to that, yes, sir.
All right.
He just got unplugged.
No, he just got back turned on. All right, so do I have a motion for the, uh, forty dollars an hour stipend for, uh, Mr. Damewood?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Matthews?
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Cordell? All right, any discussion? All right, with that, we can vote, uh, Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Hinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
I will vote aye. That passes eight two zero. You might be able to afford, uh, something besides McDonald's now, uh, those late night meals.
Oh, he's waiting on you to have some more than five hour meetings.
No more of the five hour meetings, huh? All right, um, next on the agenda is the, uh, food service calendar change, and I believe that is you, Ms. Cotton.
Yes, sir, I think Ms. Cotton's, yeah, she's back here.
Yeah.
I'll let her talk through this if you'd like for two. I don't mind, or I will either one. Go ahead, Colin.
And I don't think we have a document on this, so we're just gonna.
Hello, um, the assistant that I have, um, has freed up some time because of technology that jobs become more efficient, and she came to me and said, I would love to have spring break, fall break, different times off when the students are not in, and I just do not really need her. So we decided to move to a, a calendar where she could have that time off, and she's not needed during those times when students are not in. And I said, that'd be great. She could spend more time with her family, and I will save money on my budget, so it's a win-win.
All right.
Basically, she, well, no, basically, she's going from a, um, a two hundred and fifty-seven day calendar to a two twenty-one day calendar, which is generally eleven month versus a twelve month.
Yeah, so she'll work like two weeks after school's out.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then comes back two weeks before, so she'll have off like a month.
All right.
We have other people on that calendar, so it's not like we're making a calendar for her.
So we're not impacting the level of service or?
Other folks on the, on the two twenty, um, one, two twenty-one day calendar.
Yeah.
All right, so I would need a motion to approve this, uh, change.
I so moved.
I second it.
All right, uh, Ms. Jones? All right, so the motion is to approve the calendar change for, for the, um, um, for the, um, food service administrative assistant. Make sure I got it right, from a two hundred and fifty-seven day calendar to a two hundred and twenty-one day calendar.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion, Mr. Gillie?
The pay stays the same?
No, she will make less pay, but she was okay with that. She, she was the one that actually pursued this, so. She, we've talked about the pay, and she was fine with it.
I'd have to say she's gotta be commended if she's doing the same job and decides that, that she can take less pay and do it in, in less time. That's, that's to be commended.
It is. Well, and like I said, I think technology has helped us in some ways and eased up some of our responsibilities. So, and a lot of it has to do with, you know, spring break, fall break, Thanksgiving when students are not in. You know, that takes away some of the, the work, so.
All right, any, uh, further discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote, Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Hinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. That passes eight two nothing. I sense a real trend. All right, digital records, Mr. Wes Morland, you wanna?
You can come up?
Yeah, we'll make you walk up here. I know you don't do enough walking around during the day, so.
This is something, Mr. Ballard, that the board looked at back, uh, latter part of last year, the digital record situation, and I think a gentleman was here that told us what all could be done, et cetera, et cetera. Um, Mr. Wes Morland has asked that it be basically for the special ed records right now by themselves. Go ahead, Charlie.
But you found some money, right?
Yes, Ms. April was able to find the money, and we secured the money for this year. The initial cost is around fourteen thousand. I think you have a page there, uh, and then the special ed budget will cover the annual cost from that point on. Um, and I do have a date, a tentative date of June eleventh, that he said if the board approved for us to move forward, that he could go ahead and get started on digitizing the records we already have in house.
All right, so do I have a motion to approve, uh, digitizing the sped records?
I so moved.
Mr. Cordell? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Hinch? And so the motion is to approve digitizing the sped records for 14,400 dollars?
Yes, that's the initial cost. And then after that'll be an annual fee of somewhere between 800 to 1,000 dollars, depending on the number of records each year.
All right. Now, is this required by the state? Is, are they requiring digitizing records?
Well, we're required to keep some records forever. So a lot of the districts around us are using this same company. We got a lot of referrals from Manchester City and some other districts, Oklahoma City. And they gave good reviews of this company. And so what's gonna happen is it's gonna free up about three fourths of our storage room back there. The records will be secure. If, if, you know, God forbid a storm wants to tear the building up, we would lose those records. But if they're digitized, they'll always be, be available through a login.
And they're stored offsite?
They're stored offsite, yes sir.
We would have access to, still have access to all those records through the digital system that, that we could log into and pick up any student that, that's in there.
The original bid was, was set for the entire district and it was, it was pretty substantial. But when we broke it down to just the sped records, we thought that would be a good place to start. And then as time goes on, if we, we have good results with, with this process, then other departments in the, in the district may wanna look at it as well. But our special ed records are the bulk, other than the cum records, they're the bulk of the records that we have to deal with. We get calls probably, you know, every week or so for records for students, you know, back in the 90s, back in the 80s. We have to go through and dig and find those and then make copies and send them. But this way, we'll be able to go in with a login, we'll be able to get them. They'll be, you know, a couple clicks on the mail or the computer, we'll be able to get to them and access them.
All right.
These records, if, if for some reason down the road we were to change companies, we can still access these records, correct?
Yes, sir. And, and Mr. Damewood, we, we, do you have anything you wanna add to that as far as, if we was to have a vendor change?
Well, the.
I think he, I think he answered that in that last meeting. He explained that that is basically our data file.
Well, we, we would have the file, but it wouldn't be in an organized structure. And the next vendor would have to take those and then recreate that database. You'd have, you know, you'd have the file name, so you could search it. But it wouldn't be like a quick, quick web interface that you could get to it. It'd be a little bit more manual until you went to another vendor.
Right.
But that's the nature of the game.
We'll still have access to those files if we were to change vendors in the future.
And that was one of my main concerns, was how I would access these if that company goes out of business and they're bought out by another company.
Well, you know, I know with the sped records, you know, that most of them, I believe you have to keep indefinitely, don't you?
Yeah. Anything that's classified as an educational record?
Right.
We have to keep, yes sir.
So, I just wanna make sure of that.
Mr. Get rid of criminal record.
So, any further questions for Mr. Wes Moreland?
I'll have a comment after you vote, Mr. Ballard, dealing with school records. Now, you need to vote on this first, please.
Okay. Oh, after we vote?
Yes, sir.
Well, all right. So let's go ahead and vote then. Mr. Coon, did you go out first?
Yes.
All right, so Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell? Hinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hansert?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
I will vote aye, that's eight to zero. So, Dr. Powell?
Point of information, you may not know, but I know two, four, six, at least six of you folks sitting on the board, if you attended any of our schools in Coffee County, we have your student record back in the back of our building. We have all the files. Yes, sir, Robert, we have yours also. But seriously though, we, we have even back to the 1920s when the system started, we have the old, if you're familiar with them, what we call, excuse me, it wasn't a file like we had, it wasn't a folder. We have all that information in there that goes back and, and it's probably, I'd say at least, I know Holland works on this, but it's not uncommon for someone to come in. This is, that's considered a legal record. And we can go back and get addresses, we can go back and get parents' names, those type things, where they lived, et cetera, et cetera. What we used to call the old register books. I know some of you are familiar with those, having been in the education system. But we have all of those back in the back in our storage building back there, or in the back of the office building. But if you've ever attended Coffee County Schools, we have that student record of your cumly folder from the time you started until you graduated. Now, right now, the high school has, since about, what, 1990, Randy? Where Damewood go?
Yes, sir.
Paul, how far do y'all have them back over there?
I feel confident it goes back to the 90s, but I couldn't.
We, what reason, we, we ran out of space up here to put them. So if, if Mr. Wes Moreland lets us have his filing cabinets, we might be able to bring a few more of those up here. But we have all the student records of any student that's ever attended Coffee County Schools from the 1920s until. So, but we're not gonna, you can't go back there and look at your record.
How accurate, how accurate is the, the football scores and the actual wins and losses in the coffee pot games?
I don't know, that's, that's not a student record. That's not a student record, Mr. Gilli. Charlie?
Dr. Powell, any files that we empty out over the coming weeks, we'll be more than happy to sell those to any department that wants to purchase those. But the majority of our cabinets do lock, so they have been spoken for by schools in the district. But we do hope to open up some room back there.
I didn't authorize that.
Well, sometimes you just have to make decisions, Dr. Powell.
All right. So that's a full story there. All right. Agenda item nine was approved in the consent agenda, so number 10 is consolidated funding. So that is you, Ms. Cole, so. And I know that everybody's read all 207 pages of this.
Good afternoon. Just know, that's not my template, that's the State Department's template. And if it were up to me, it would not look like, like that. It would not be that complicated. So when you click on the link, we go through this every year. Some of the pages need to be rotated. So the way to do that is you have to down, I download it first. And then when I download it, it gives me the icon. So if you're wanting to rotate any of those pages, just know it's possible, but I always download first and that helps. So the consolidated funding application, that's required by the state every year. And that's where our title budgets and our IDEA budgets are housed. And it's already been due, we've had to submit it Monday, Monday was the deadline. So we had to send that up to the State Department for approval. And they always, there are different readers, they look at that and they give us feedback and tell us what we need to change. And there's usually something every year, it's usually minor, that we have to change. When you look at that, it's a little complicated this year, a little different this year, and you may know why. We've talked about this in the past. But with US Ed and the uncertainty that's going on in Washington right now, states don't have allocations. We just don't have our federal allocations. And this is across the state, I'm sure it's across the nation. So what the State Department decided to do, they went ahead and uploaded our allocations for this year, this 24, 25 school year. And they said, that's gonna be where you work from for your 25, 26 budget. So that's what we did, that's, that's all we can do at this point. So they picked up that amount and they put it over for 25, 26, and they said, plan accordingly. So what we did was we picked up our plans, what we're doing right now, and we just shifted those for 25, 26. Now, will that actually be our final allocation? I don't believe it will be. I don't know what it will look like. If you remember at the, may have been the retreat, I mentioned that I've noticed a pattern the past few years with Title I losing about 15, 16,000-ish dollars. I would expect that pattern to continue. But of course, then we have to think about what's gonna happen with federal budgets in general and what's gonna happen in Washington. So what I've read so far is, I don't know if you've heard about the skinny budget, President Trump's skinny budget. So that's come out and that's just an initial proposed budget that's been proposed to Congress. And there are some details, it's pretty vague, but there are some details. And the details that I picked up on was Title I, they said, we're just gonna flatline Title I. It's not gonna go up, it's not gonna go down. And that's what they say for Title I and for IDEA. So that's good news. But then, then you think about, remember, I've shared with you the complication that we're in with Title I right now, because we've had a 4% raise, and we had a 7% raise, and now we just had another 4% raise. So Title I is in the hole when it comes to trying to maintain personnel that we've had the past few years, but also trying to balance a budget because of the steps and the pay raises. So that's one of the, one of the issues. So what's happening is with the budget, the Department of Education, I believe I read, where there's about a 4.5 billion dollar overall reduction. But they're gonna leave Title I and IDEA alone, is what we're hearing so far. So when I looked through that budget that was proposed to Congress, I noticed they didn't mention Title II-A and they didn't mention Title IV. And Title IV, if you recall, at the, I believe it was the retreat, I made a comment. I said, I take almost all that budget and I transfer it into Title I because we don't have fluff in our budget. Those days were over many, many, many years ago. It goes in people. So that $80,000, I transfer almost all of it, I think I transferred 70, assuming we get it, to Title I to help balance that budget. So that wasn't mentioned in the president's budget. What they did say was they're consolidating some of the other programs, but they didn't say what programs they were consolidating. So we don't know what it's gonna look like. They didn't mention Title, Title II-A. Title II-A, we pay for three academic coaches from Title II-A. So I'm not telling you great news, I'm just telling you all that I know. And what I'm getting is not even coming from the State Department. We, we have to dig to find out what we're finding so far, because the State Department doesn't know either. And they're waiting and they're in limbo like we are. Let's see. So Title IV wasn't mentioned, Title II-A wasn't mentioned. And they're consolidating some of the other federal programs, but we don't know what it will look like. What I think may happen is there, it may come down to the states and it may be more flexible. And my fear is some of the money will come off the top of Title I and be pulled for other areas, because it's gonna be more flexible. So there are some decisions that will have to be made. But right now, based on everything we know, it's the very same plan as it is for, that we're having in this school year.
So this is essentially the 142 fund is what the consolidated funding application is?
It's, yes.
Okay.
The federal, anything else, April?
That's all, I mean, I think you covered, you, good talk. Okay.
Yes, it's the federal budgets, federal only.
So I would need a motion to approve the consolidated funding application for fiscal year 2026.
And we could, I could have waited until June to talk to you, but I've been given no indication that we'll know anything more in June, maybe even in July. I'm not sure, and the state doesn't know when we'll find anything out solid, that's solid.
That's during the summer, so.
Yeah.
We all need to take off anyways.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I so moved.
I'll second.
Mr. Coon? Okay. Mr. Cordell? Any discussion or questions for Ms. Cole?
So Krista, you may have covered this, but did you say the academic coaches come under Title II-A, is that?
Title II-A is high-quality teacher education. It can be used for coaches, it can be used for professional development.
Okay.
So, yet last year, we had all of our coaches in ESAR, because that made sense while we had ESAR, to use ESAR. And so what we did was, then we were able to, to build up the Title II-A budget while we could. So even if they cut Title II-A, hopefully they would let us keep our carryover, because we have strong carryover in II-A. But yes, there are three coaches in II-A, there are two coaches in general school budget.
Okay. Yeah, just depending on, on the restrictions on carryover, for Title II-A, we should be able to cover the academic coaches for a whole nother year, but I don't know what they're gonna do with the carryover either, so that's still up in the air. Okay.
So if we approve this, this is, it's with an asterisk, then, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any further questions, discussion? All right. Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Hinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hansert?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
And Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
And I will vote aye, that passes eight to zero. All right. And now, the moment I know we've all been waiting for is the eight, eight, count of eight, budget amendments?
I apologize for that, I just feel like it was, it'd be easier for you guys to understand them if I broke them down just a little bit more than putting them on one or two or three. So I'll try to get through them so we don't, you know, spend a ton, ton of time on each one. The very first one is 13, if you're ready for me to go, you ready for me to go?
Got it.
So this, number 13, 141, 2025 dash 13. So we have a couple of state grants that we receive each year. The Innovative School Models Grant and then the State Special Ed Preschool Grant. We had to make some amendments to clean those up, to close, so we can close those out for the school year. And because they're state grants, they had to come through you guys as a budget amendment. So this grant, this budget amendment is just to clean those two grants up and to move funding around to be able to clean up and spend all the funding in the budget for these two grants.
All right. So I need a, a motion to approve Budget Amendment 141 dash 2025 dash 13.
So moved, Ms. Chair.
Mr. Gilli?
Second.
Mr. Cordell? All right. Any discussion, questions for April on this? All right. Then, Mr., did I skip you, Beth?
Kathleen.
Ms. Hinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hansert?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
And I will vote aye, that passes eight to zero. Okay. Next up, we have 14.
So 141, 2025, 14. This is to cover the item, one of the items you just voted on for the sped records, digital, to make, to digitize those records. This is to move funding to this sped line in contracted services, to go ahead and take care of that.
All right. We have a motion to approve Budget Amendment 141 dash 2025 dash 14.
I so moved.
Mr. Coon?
I'll second.
Mr. Gilli, seconds.
Y'all did some digging.
All right.
It's that time of year.
Any discussion, questions for April? All right. Mr. Hansert?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Hinch?
Aye.
I will vote aye, that passes eight to zero. Next up is 15.
141, 2025, 15. So I should have asked this probably question earlier when we were talking about Mr. Damewood's stopping. From previous discussions, there was talk about going back to pay him for the hours he's worked for this school year already. So that's what this budget amendment's for. I don't think we addressed that in the, in the motion earlier, as I look at this budget amendment. So if that starts for this school year, if we're gonna back pay him for the hours he's already worked for this school year, or if it will start for the next school year. But that's what this budget amendment is for, is to move funding to that line if we were gonna back pay him for his hours that he's put in for this school year.
I believe it was back pay for, for the stuff he'd worked, so.
Okay, so this would budget amendment, so he does, he's the only person in his line, so he doesn't have funds to cover that. So this budget amendment, and I've over, probably overestimated, and I'm glad I did, because I estimated it at $30 an hour, not 40. So this budget amendment will move funds to that line, so we can pay him out for those hours.[1783.28]
Ms. Chair, I believe we would have to, before this meeting is concluded, we would have to back up and amend previously adopted, and change that last motion to include that on his pay.
I don't know that, I don't know if you could do it in this one, or if you would back up and do it in the other.
I, I think, I think Mr. Gilli's probably right, because he didn't state, that was for basically here on out.
Yeah.
But.
But if this was designed and intended for the back pay in this budget amendment for it, we would have to, we would have to, um, interject, we could have interjected at any point to back up and, uh, amend previously adopted during the meeting.
Well, we don't have a motion on the floor right now, so we can do it right now.
Right now.
So do you want to make that motion?
Uh, yes, Ms. Chair, I'll, I would like to make a motion that we amend previously adopted an agenda item. Uh, let's see, which one was it now?
Six. Six.
That would be, uh, item number six.
Yes.
To include, consideration of back pay of $7,500.
Well, it'll, this is high.
Okay.
So it would just need to back pay him for the hours that he's.
Back pay for the hours in which he has accumulated this.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Cordell? Okay, so the motion is to, um, to amend, uh, um, our, our, um, motion on, um, uh, item number six, to include back pay for, uh, Mr. Dame Wood.
Mr. Chair, something doesn't sound right here in the way we're doing this. You cannot go back and amend something that's already.
Yes, you can, it's amend previously adopted, and as long as you do it before that meeting is over. That's the same thing as, as, uh, motion to reconsider. Can our parliamentarian, or whoever it is, verify that?
We could, uh,
I'm not saying you can't go back, I would, I would think you would need to go back and make a, another motion that would include, and not change the one that you've already got, but a new motion with that.
Reconsider item number six.
But, but you've already passed it, reconsider's gonna be to, if it, if it failed.
No, it's, it's the same thing.
We can vote to rescind it.
To reconsider previously adopted.
And make a new motion.
It just does not feel right to me, but y'all, y'all do how you feel. It just doesn't feel right to me, what you're doing, but I'm not against it.
Is Mr. Dame Wood on Google currently?
All, all I'm gonna do is read what came up when I searched for it. A strict application of Robert's Rules required that a motion to reconsider to be made on the same day the vote on the original motion was taken. However, a motion to reconsider, once made, can be debated and voted on on a later day.
Well, I don't think we'd wanna do that, I think we'd wanna do that.
So I think I made it to the right point in making a motion to reconsider, or reconsider.
To amend, so.
Cause we already, we already had a motion that we've voted and passed, so we have to do a motion to reconsider.
Right, so.
If that's what we're gonna do. Otherwise, we leave it where it is, that he's gonna get paid from this day forward, and we don't do this budget amendment.
Right.
That's your two choices, so. If we can't figure it out, and we don't know Robert's Rules of Order, then.
Well, I think we want to make sure that he gets his back pay, correct? So I think that was the intent, so, um, so if we did a motion to reconsider, then that would probably cover it, correct?
Then per what Mr. Shore said, I just need to add Agenda Item Number Six to my motion to reconsider.
Right, okay.
Previously adopted.
All right.
So then you will be voting on the reconsider.
First.
This is, I'm not positive on this, but to reconsider, you vote on it, then you can actually, it could actually fail with the new amendment.
Yes.
In it, yes.
What if I made a motion to rescind the original motion?
No, you have to reconsider previously adopted.
Well, that's reconsidering it.
No, you have, you have to make a motion. You have to make a motion and have a vote on the motion to reconsider previously adopted. I'm gonna say item, Agenda Item Number Six. That day. Yes, when I, when we, when we make this motion to reconsider and go back to item number six, then we're gonna reconsider item number six. And then the motion will be made at that time to do what we done the first time with an inclusion of paying him his back pay.
I, I think you're correct, yes.
All right, so the motion is to reconsider Agenda Item Members, or, or approval of Agenda Item Number Six.
Previously adopted Agenda Item Number Six.
All right. So, is there a discussion on that? All right, uh, Ms. Jones, this is to reconsider.
I'm gonna ask who, who was the second, I heard the motion was.
Yeah, I'm confused now.
Oh, it was Mr. Gilli, who was the second?
You make a motion?
For the reconsider.
Might not speak for you. No, it's, it's, it's not, it's not, and you can lay it, and I'm gonna.
I, I make a motion that we, uh, what, what it said.
Yeah.
To reconsider.
There's already a motion on the floor.
Okay, I'll second.
All right.
I'm confused too.
We just need, we need to, we need to tune in here.
They know what they're doing.
Tell us who the motion and the second is.
The, the motion is Mr. Gilli, and the second is Ms. Jones, the re, the motion to reconsider. So as I understand it, we will reconsider, we will vote to reconsider, and then we'll go back and, and then make a motion to, um, include the back pay for, for Mr. Dame.
That's the wish.
Okay, so this is the motion to reconsider, so, uh, Ms. Jones? Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Inch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser? And I will vote aye, that passes eight to zero, now, we need a motion.
For Agenda Item Number Six. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the $40 an hour to pay Mr. Dame Wood for his time, covering board meetings. And a part of that motion, I also want to include paying him back this year for the time that he has committed this year.
Back to July 1?
Back pay.
Back to July 1?
Back to July 1, 2024.
Do we have a second?
I will second it.
Put the rate on there again.
Yeah, what, what is, what is the rate? We don't even know what we're paying here.
Forty dollars.
Forty. So what's the total amount that we're gonna have here up to this date?
So I estimated it, because he gave me a number of hours, and then I added hours to that, because we won't know that until we finish the school year.
You got a, you got a glimpse in the budget amendment.
So the motion is to, um, uh, approve a stipend for, uh, Mr. Dame Wood, including back pay since July 1 for $40 an hour.
It's under, it's little, well, right now, it would be around $3,000.
Okay.
For 90 hours, or 80 something hours of work, 77.
And the budget memo we're looking at is $7,500, right, so.
Yeah, I, I overestimated, because we've been having a ton of meetings, and so.
All right, so I would need a second on, on that.
I'll second.
Ms. Jones, okay. Any discussion, in case nobody's thoroughly confused? I think we got it. Um, all right. Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Inch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
And that passes eight to zero, so the, uh, the new motion is to approve, um, um, $40 an hour stipend for Mr. Dame Wood, starting July 1, and then going forward, so. So now we can move on to Budget Amendment, um, 15, which would include the money for this.
Sorry for that, but yeah, this, so the budget amendment will cover, like I said earlier, it's more than that, because I wanted to overestimate to make sure we didn't go over on his salary line, but, yeah, so this budget amendment will take care of that back pay for his extra pay for the board meetings.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
I so move.
Mr. Coon? Second.
I second.
Mr. Hanser? All right, any discussion? All right, then start with, uh, did I get you, Holly? Start with Holly.
Oh, you, you started with me last time.
Oh, okay, Mr. Coon then.
Aye.
I'm starting to lose track.
That's okay.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Inch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
And Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Vote aye, that passes eight to zero, okay. Budget Amendment 16.
So this is a, um, donation that we received for, um, the academic coaches to be, to buy instructional supplies, um, from the Coffey County Education Foundation. Um, so this money is just, this is just to bring those, those funds into the budget, so they can, I think they've already spent, but this is to clean up the budget, um, line item for this, um, donation.
All right, we have a motion to approve 141 dash 2025 dash 16.
I so move.
I'll second.
Coon, Mr. Cordell? Um, so the motion is to approve Budget Amendment 141 dash 2025 dash 16. Any discussion? Questions for April? All right, uh, Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Inch?
Aye.
Ms. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
We'll vote aye, eight to zero. All right, 17.
Okay, so 141, 2025, 17. Um, you can go to the back pay, or the second page, and it, this is basically my normal cleanup, so I'm still estimating lines and, um, running through the budget to see, make sure we're not gonna go over in, um, mainly salary lines, but other places where I can't transfer, um, just because it'll be hard to get an amendment through once, you know, this month ends. So basically, this is to clean up, um, and to add funding for like, so number one, we had, um, to clean up a line for pre-K grant that wasn't in there, so I had to increase that line for the grant, and then, um, we had to add some more funding to contracted services for SPED. Uh, we, I'm trying to estimate the, what we're gonna pay the crossing guard at the high school. Um, that bill doesn't come in until the end of school year, so I'm trying to make sure I have enough funding in that line, um, to increase some, the board member committee fees. We've been having a lot of meetings, so I did want to make sure that committee fee line isn't gonna go over, um, career ladder, um, I need to make adjustments, um, to career ladder. Salary lines, we had a couple of places in salary lines where we had to pick up, um, we, I think mainly was in, in the SPED department, where we had to pick up an extra SLP. Um, that was hourly, that was helping around the district, so that was to include that. Um, and then a medical and vision insurance increase. Um, just still trying to estimate those lines to make sure that we're gonna be good as we close the school year. And I was able to take from other places in the budget, and it doesn't affect fund balance.
I think we're gonna have to get you a, a golden shovel, because nobody can dig and find like you.
It's, it's the time of the year.
All right, do we have a motion to approve 141 dash 2025 dash 17?
I so move.
Cordell?
Second.
Mr. Coon? Any discussion, questions for April?
I just have one question, is the, is Coffey County Central High School crossing guard, is that the only guard that we pay?
That's the only we pay for the city. Everyone else, we pay their extra labor to do that, so everyone else, like, we have three crossing guards, so we have one at Raider Academy, one at the middle school, and I think we have one at the high school. Um, we have one at the high school that we pay for, and then we have one that helps out at the high school sometimes, but the one, those three peo, three of those people we pay are currently on our salary. It's just like an extra job for them, and then we pay the city for the crossing guard that sits, I think, main out, out in front of the school.
Oh, so that's what that adjustment was for?
Yeah, so we'll get the.
You pay the city for the C, CTHS crossing guard.
Based on the number of days we were in school, and so we'll get that invoice like the end of May, first of June, from the city.
Thank you.
Further questions? All right, where are we at here? Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
And Ms. Jones?
Aye.
And Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Inch?
Aye.
And I will vote aye, that passes eight to zero, 18.
141, 2025, 18. This is our summer school grant that we received, um, we just received it maybe a week ago. Um, so this covers, it's the same funding we received last year, so we're gonna be able to, um, keep the program the same that we've had in the past years. I think it's been the same amount and the same plan we've had in the past, um, two to three years. Um, so this will cover, um, I think it's K, no. I don't, I'm not sure the grade level, but I think it's all the way up through middle school. I'm not sure if it's K or 1. Um, and then it will also cover the transportation to get those, um, children to, um, either the middle school or to the, to elementary school that we will have the elementary summer school at. Um, and then it will help cover, pay the teachers, um, a nurse, and then to principals, stop-ins, based on who fills those positions, and then a custo, a couple custodians, and then bus drivers, and their benefits.
Okay, uh, motion to approve 141 dash 2025 dash 18.
I make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Cordell? All right, any questions for April?
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Ms. Inch, uh, was, made the motion, and Mr. Cordell second, so. All right, um.
I have one question, where it says office of the principal. What does that mean, uh, retirement hybrid stabilization with number one?
So that is, um, I think it was 2014, the State Department changed the, changed how we pay our retirement to our employees. So anyone hired before 2014, we consider them all-state legacy employees. And then anyone hired after 2014, their retirement is calculated differently. So we, we put in part, um, it's, it's the way the retirement is split. So anyone hired 2014 will hit the 204 line, and anyone that's considered after 2014, we split their retirement between 204 and, um, 217. It's the stabilization part of the 2014 and after hires, pretty much. So it's part of retirement, but it's just how we split those employees that are hired after that date.
So where it says principal 15,600, that's not just one principal?
That's two. So we'll have, we'll have a middle school program, and we'll have a, um, elementary program, and those are two different locations. So we'll hire someone to lead both of those places, or we'll have someone in charge of both of those places.
Okay, not the principal that's already there, but you'll be hiring someone else.
I think in the past, it's, it's the same people that have ran in the past. So it's the same people that we've hired in the past to do it, have, came on to continue to do it.
It's just under a principal line?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further, further questions? All right, let's vote, uh, Ms. Jones?
Aye.
And Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Inch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
And vote aye, that passes eight to zero. Number 19.
Okay, so number 141, 2025, 19. Um, you remember, we've talked about our TISA outcome bonus, and how we were gonna, um, do that a little differently from what we did in the previous school year, where we've met as supervisors, and we've put together a plan on, um, how instructionally we can help, how we can, um, support our academics, our ATC, ACT scores, and port, support our CTE department. So we met as a group up here, and we met with principals, and we met with, um, elementary principals and secondary principals, and we started working through some of these plans. Um, so basically, we've worked the plan, and we've started to, um, implement some of these, So basically, we've worked the plan and we've started to implement some of these, some of the items in our plan in this school year. So if you look at the bottom of this budget amendment, it gives you the reasons, so elementary is wanting to provide more support for their curriculum, so the foundation workbooks would help them do that. Industrial certifications, this is something that Skipper struggles to do in his budget. So this would, this provides more certifications for his area. The NIT, NIET support, we currently already have that in place for some of our elementary schools, and that was a grant we received, it's wa- I think it's walkthroughs and I'm, I'm just basically, you know, tipping on the iceberg of instructional stuff, I'm just trying to give you an overview of what, you know, what these things are for. But, so some of our schools currently have that grant and some do not, so this is to extend to the schools that we don't currently have that grant with. We did some secondary de-escalation training, we opened that up to all secondary. Some certified instructional training, letter, letter training certification, so that is to get our letters certified person to get her certification so she can continue to do those developments, staff developments, and then some ACT mastery prep training. So these are kind of the things we've started to look at this year, just so we can start working in the summer and get ahead on some of these plans that we put together. And so this is to bring in part of that funding from the TESA outcome bonus. We received two hundred and ninety-two thousand, one ninety-seven fifty, so we're going to use around thirty-eight thousand, four sixty-two of that funds for these items for just this school year. The remaining part of that will roll over into the next school year, and you will see another budget amendment at some point to start working on more things in the plan. But this is like the beginning of, of what we've started, so we can start developing and doing trainings and working on that through the summer so we can get the ball rolling for the next school year, pretty much.
All right, I need a, a motion to approve one forty-one dash twenty-two-five dash nineteen.
I so move.
Mr. Cordell.
I'll second it.
Ms. Jones. Any discussion, further questions for April?
I just have one question, under the industrial certifications, CTE support, it's fifteen thousand, three hundred ninety-three dollars. Is that set aside for paying for those CTE people to get certifications?
So like it would be for like an example of Tennessee hair braider would be like for his cosmetology classes? And then, I'm trying to look at his OSHA ten and employee's skill certifications. Some Adobe certifications for, I guess, I'm sure his business class, or not business classes, but computer science classes.
Is that for individual teachers?
This is-
This is for students?
For students.
For students, so you're, they're the ones, we're paying for their certifications.
Yes, ma'am.
I was confused because I know we paid a certification for one of the personnel over there to be certified so we could hire them in a certain position, and I thought, I was confusing that with the-
So this pays for the students, so this helps him be able to do more for, to help to pay for the students, so that was part of, and I think that's the full amount we've budgeted for this, so he may not spend all of that, so you may see that come again.
But that's for students?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, that clarifies it.
All right, further questions? Okay, I believe Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon. Mr. Gilli. Mr. Cordell. Ms. Yinch.
Aye.
Mr. Hanser. Ms. Jones. That passes eight to zero, number twenty.
Number twenty. One forty-one, twenty-two-five, twenty, this is to bring in, so in previous meeting, you guys approved to do the lighting construction documents for the athletic lighting. So this is to pull some funding out of that, the capital restricted fund that we have set aside for lighting. Forty-two thou- it's pulls the forty-two thousand out to be able to fund that. And then in a previous school year, we fund, we set aside some funding for track improvements, I think it was around a hundred thousand dollars. So we're starting to work around, work on, we got in a list from athletic director and the track coach, and we're starting to work through some of the items that need to be fixed at the track so we can eventually host a meet there, but, so this, this budget amendment is to take the funds out of the capital restricted fund balance and to put it into our budget to cover the two, cover these items. And this will affect fund balance, it affects our restricted fund, restricted assigned fund balance, and you can see that at the bottom of the page. It makes our new restricted fund balance eight point three million.
Okay. A motion to accept or to approve one forty-one dash twenty-two-five dash twenty.
I make that motion.
Ms. Yinch. Second.
I'll second.
Mr. Coon. All right, any questions for April?
This track improvement, is that where the track's bubbling up?
No, so these are specific things that we need to buy for the track, so this would be like a high jump pack, starting blocks, hurdles, a discus cage, block cart, so this is not for the track that they, this is like to, so we can start getting our equipment and getting our thing, getting our track ready so we can host a track meet. So it's not for the specific asphalt on the track, it's for things that we can make our program, our track program a little bit better, equipment-wise.
Some of their equipment's starting to get fairly poor shape, so they want to choose to purchase some of this equipment to take care of it, then use some of the other funds to actually take care of some of the track needs such as your high jump, discus, pole vault, all those different things, so we'll, we'll be looking at that before long.
Further questions? All right, Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon. Mr. Cordell, or Mr. Gilli. Mr. Cordell. Ms. Yinch.
Aye.
Mr. Hanser. Ms. Jones. Will vote aye, that passes eight to zero. Wow, we made it through all the budget amendments. Now on to the budget, budget update.
Okay, so this is the budget update through March. Through March, in, in March, we received four point four million dollars in revenue, which brought us a balance to date of forty-three point one million dollars for the year. Puts our budget at eighty-two point six eight percent compared to last year of eighty-one point, eight-one percent. Local revenue of that, of the March number was around one million, which was twenty-four percent of the budget for the bu- amount received in March, and then the state amount was around three point three million, and then other was around twenty-eight thousand, so that is, revenues are on track. Nothing really to report there, we still have four months of revenues to report, so it will be, I, I think our budget will be, well, there's no issues with the budget, revenue budget. And then for expenditures, March, we paid out four point three million dollars. Total balance to date is thirty-four point three. With, we've used sixty-two point six eight percent of budget, and then of last year to date, we've, we've used sixty point six five percent. Some of the budget, some of the items in here are, were from the budget amendments that you've already seen. There's nothing really, nothing to report other, that we haven't already discussed in previous meetings. I don't see any issues with the budget, if you have general questions, I will take them.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the budget update? Or yeah, budget update?
I make that motion.
I'll second.
Jones, Mr. Cordell. All right, questions for April?
April, can you explain other student support on here? Seventy-two, one thirty.
Okay, so that's where we pay our guidance counselors from.
Okay.
And so last year, we paid our guidance counselors out of SRR funds, that was allowed. And so that's why the last year-to-date number looks so much lower than this year-to-date.
Any que- further questions?
I just have one question on the local option, county local option taxes. Looks like we're getting a little less, is that correct, or am I looking at that wrong?
It is, but our budget's a little bit, our budget's a little bit more. We increase our budget each year, so that, it looks like we've received a little bit less. But we've had some really good, we've had some really good months. We've had, I think, no months that, less than five hundred thousand dollars a month. So I think our budget, I think we'll hit our budget, I think we'll actually go over our budget. It just looks a little less because we've increased our budget, from last year-to-date, our budget was less. So it looks like we've received less, but I think we're going to hit our budget plus some.
Further questions? All right. We're voting to approve the, the, the financial, well, budget update for one forty-one fund. Ms. Matthews.
I think you started with me the last couple times.
I'm really starting to lose track. All right, Mr. Gilli. Mr. Cordell. Ms. Yinch.
Aye.
Mr. Hanser. Ms. Jones. Ms. Matthews now.
Aye.
All right. Will vote aye, that passes eight to zero. Okay, we are finished with our agenda items. So now we move on to items for discussion. So, so let's start with Mr. Coon.
I don't have anything at this time.
All right, Ms. Matthews.
Well, I have something. I just want to give a little shout-out to one of our athletic programs. I believe it was last week, our softball team played, I think it was Lincoln County, and I wasn't at the game because I was at my daughter's golf match, but I was told that a player for Lincoln County took a line drive to the face. And was, I believe, airlifted to Nashville if I'm not mistaken? Or maybe it was Erlanger, I'm not sure, but-
Airlanded, she went to Vanderbilt.
Vanderbilt, okay. Anyway, later that night, I reached out to the coach just to check on the player and found out that there was, they didn't think there's any permanent damage, and she was getting stitched up and ready to be sent home. So that was the good news, but also some other good news was that this coach bragged on our softball program and our team and our coaches because he said that our players, while EMS was there tending to the player, loading the player up for the opposing team, Lincoln County, our team went across the field and our coaches and stood by Lincoln County's team and supported them and were there for them during that time of uncertainty. And he was just really impressed and bragged on our softball program a great deal. And I just want to thank those players, those parents that raised those players, to be a great example, and our coaches. So that represents us really well, and I'm very, very proud of that, so.
Ms. Jones.
Yes, I'd just like to recognize three principals this year that spend about every school board meeting we've had. And that's Mr. Paul Parsley, and Leah Parsley, and Dr. Jimmy Anderson. And that doesn't go unnoticed, that's really a, a good thing that you're doing, and it shows that you're interested in our school system, and we appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Hanser.
I have nothing at this time.
Ms. Yinch.
I went to the award ceremony at the high school, and when I left home, I told my husband, I said, I'll be home in about an hour. But what impressed me about it was the way our community comes together to give scholarships to, to our students, and how many there were. It, it was very impressive, and, and I was just delighted to see our community come together like that for our students, so. It was, it was a great three-hour award ceremony.
Mr. Cordell. Got anything to say?
Oh, I enjoyed the award ceremony the other day, that was, wow, impressive. I'm so proud of our students, teachers, our whole team, I'm just, it was a good evening, or good morning, good day to be there. Thank y'all for everything you do.
And Mr. Gilli.
No, I think, I think I'm pretty good, I do want to throw a word out to some of those folks that may be attending the Thundies this weekend. That's another great thing, if you ever get a chance to see that in Coffey County, and all of the amounts of scholarships that are given to our athletes, it's something to see. I think they're sold out, I've got probably four or five seats left at my table, so if anybody wants to go, let me know.
All right. And for me, I would really like to thank the, the board for all the work they put in through the director's search process. It's been a long, arduous process, and we're going to culminate tonight with the signing of the contract with, with Mr. Hargrove, but there was a lot of meetings and a lot of long meetings, and, you know, a lot, a lot of meetings, and we kind of, you know, I know Melissa worked hard on it, and, and so, and all the board members really put in a lot of effort, and, and I really thank everybody for, for all that effort, and we're really looking forward to working with Mr. Hargrove. And we'll start that tonight, signing of the contract after the meeting.
Let me make one more comment.
Okay.
I'm going to miss seeing you, Dr. Powell, at our next meeting, and I want to thank you for what you've done this year for our school system. I'm really excited about working with Mr. Hargrove, but when I look over there and you're not in that seat, I'm going to be a little bit sad, so I just want you to know that.
I agree, I second that.
If this was your last time, I'd feel the same way.
He won't go nowhere, he'll be here.
Thank you for your service, and Melissa, thank you for your, all your service, and everybody.
Yeah, we've arranged a little bit of overlap with Dr. Powell and Mr. Hargrove to kind of transition things, so, so that's kind of, that'll be great, so. All right, with that, committee reports, I know we had a policy committee and-
Yes, we had seventeen items on the agenda, we spent a little over two hours, almost two and a half hours, and we didn't move from one. However, we came out of that with a great base policy for the cell phone issue. And answering that, we came out with a great base, I think tomorrow, three o'clock here, we actually start back with just a couple of items that we need to clean up on that, and then we will have a policy for the board to consider.
All right, and there's some other, there were some other committees, right? Safety committee, I mean, non-public. All right, so.
Non-public.
Any comments on, on that, so?
Non-public.
All right, so we move on to director's report.
Only thing I have is some dates that we need to remind you of, is Mr. Gilli mentioned policy meeting tomorrow at three. I'll be in Franklin on Thursday, we're having a toss, a legislative session, which hopefully will bring all of the new laws that have been passed this year and bring those things to life. There's still some questions that we're not sure of exactly what's going to come out of them, but I know Mr. Cagle will be there and some more attorneys, TSBA will probably be there, and that's an holiday meeting pretty much, so I'll be over there. May the nineteenth is a senior parade, they'll start at, I think they start at the high school gathering there around four-thirty, and they'll come from the high school down fifty-five and go downtown and end up at the Raider Academy, I think. And so if you haven't watched that, that's, that's a very good program to have. May the twenty-second, they're having a retirement get-together for Ms. Potts at New Union Elementary School, and that will be from two to four. And that'll be on Thursday, the twenty-second. Also on the twenty-second, at seven o'clock is our virtual academy graduation, and that'll be downtown in front of the Harvest Food Store on the square, and that'll be on the twenty-second. That starts at seven o'clock. Friday, May the twenty-fourth is a day that we have graduation, and that'll be at, hopefully at Carden Gerald Field. If you have any input from your weatherman, give them a little talk, make sure they give us some good weather next Friday night. Because if that has to be moved to the high school gym, it's almost disastrous, but it can happen, it has happened in the past. But anyway, what I was going to tell you, the graduation starts at seven o'clock, don't wait till six-thirty to get there. Because if you're in the line at six-thirty, you won't make the- Because if you're in the line at six-thirty, you won't make the seven o'clock graduation. Cars are backed up as far as you can see both ways, so you need to plan on getting there. I'd say what, Mr. Parsley's from our neighborhood, at six o'clock or thereabouts?
Yes, about six.
I know that sounds ridiculous, but if you, if you've never been to a graduation ceremony, you'll know what we're talking about. But that'll be at the Carden Gerald Field. There will be a place for you to park that, Melissa will give you some information. If you've already got those, okay, there'll be a place to park. But again, I emphasize, please don't wait around and try to get there at six-thirty. Because at six-thirty, you won't be there at the graduation. We'll be, there's a, we'll be seating up front, in front of the, actually in front of the big Jumbotron, but it'll be away from it just a little bit. But you're invited to sit up there as a board, so that will be on Friday. Our next board meeting, excuse me, your next board meeting is June the ninth. And that will be here. There's also, I had on my calendar a work session. Are you familiar with what we're?
It's actually on the calendar yet, though, so.
Do what?
I don't think that's actually on the calendar yet.
Okay, it was on mine for some reason, I didn't know what I had it on there for, but anyway, that's okay. Personnel, we're still hiring each and every day. Got a lot of, don't have a, a lot of applicants that, in some positions that we need to fill, but we're working on that, but they're coming in daily pretty much, so that's good. If you have any questions about that, let myself or Stephanie Langham is our H R person and she keeps a very close eye on all that as to what's going on. As Ms. Inch mentioned, this is my last official board meeting. I will be around a couple of weeks in June to maybe help Mr. Hargrove figure out what's going on. And, but he'll be calling the shots come June the second, because first is on Sunday. He'd be, may be calling on Sunday too, if he's been like I've been. But that's his official first day, well, official first day was the thirtieth, I think, or thirty-first. But anyway, I appreciate the opportunity that, that you've given me to serve. The students of Coffee County, I started my career here back in nineteen sixty-seven. Spent thirty-five years in this system, went over to the city's system, spent some time there, finished my career up here and I certainly appreciate it. The citizens of Coffee County, there's some fine people in our county. We, meaning all of us, have got a good school system. We got things we need to work toward, sure we do, but I think that's going to come to place. You folks have got a good idea of what's going on. I have faith in Mr. Hargrove, I think he can, will be a good leader for our school system. So I'm, I'm looking forward to working for, working with him for, you know, working for him for a day or two. But that, it, it's been a pleasure. I know when I started this, my wife said, "Well, you know, it shouldn't be too bad." Said, "I don't have any problem with that." Said, "You know, you're just going to be a figurehead up there and you, maybe you'll talk to people when they come in and maybe sign checks from time to time and a few purchase orders." And when I'd get home in the afternoon, tell her what was going on sometimes, and I sure didn't tell her everything, just enough to agitate her. And she said, "If I'd have known that, you wouldn't have been there." But I'm, I'm glad I was here, I've enjoyed it, I certainly have. It's been a pleasure to serve. I wouldn't take anything for it. I put it on my resume, but I don't have anything to put a resume for, so I really don't care. I'm, I'm through with it. But no, I will be, I will be thinking of you folks, you come to a lot of the athletic events. I'm not going to say I'm going to watch you on TV because I don't know if I will, probably not most of the time. But I, I do want to have a good relationship with you and then I want you to, to feel good about Mr. Hargrove coming in and the staff, have an excellent staff up here. They have helped me more than, than I've ever known about. You know, you, you stay in this business thirty-five, forty years and you get out for about ten years and you don't know anything. And that's, that's basically what's kind of happened. I, I still call on our folks up here every day. Someone will come up on the computer, I'll have to call someone, "Hey, what's this all about?" They'll come in and tell me, we get it taken care of. Scott, I hope you are able to do that too and I think you will. Our folks will help you all they can, I'll assure you of that. But thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. Well, we're going to wrap up with Capital Projects, so you, Mr. Hargrove can see kind of what's, what's going on here too. So the floor is yours, Mr. Shores.
Okay, just a few things, starting off with the football field. We, at the end of the press boxes, we put some canopies. It's, main role is to help keep water out of the press box. We were starting to have some floor damage, we made some repairs and we're hoping that this actually helps prevent the, any more damage in the future. So, so those are finished up, or we're done today. It's not on here as a finished job because it was finished today, pretty quick. I think already, I'm, I'm just talking about a few things because all these others have already been talked about. I believe I talked about the lights at the middle school, the LED lights in the aux gym and also the scissor lift and so forth that they, they had to rent and so forth to fix it. That's all been taken care of, they are on dimmer. When, when they built our middle school, I, I don't know what they were thinking when they did the lights. It is, they were a mess. So we, we got them all fixed, they're on a dimmer, they're LED, it, it's a good setup and they're all working again. The Union Walkway awning, that was back during, I, I can't remember exactly when it was, we had a storm. The awning on the far left of the, the building on the old part was blown off. We got money from insurance to repair it, so it's been fixed. That's what that is there, is the repairs. Parking lot striper, we have purchased a striping machine for doing our parking lots. After we do one parking lot, it's basically going to pay for itself. So it, it's one of those type of items that is, is almost, was a no-brainer to force to get. And as we need to stripe our parking lots, and we have a lot of parking lots, it will, we've got it to be able to take care of it. Our maintenance can handle, actually doing the striping. New Union glass replacement, we had some broken glass at New Union. Also, we have some Plexiglas that had been, to replace broken glass years and years ago. Some of it's probably twenty, thirty years ago, probably under Dr. Powell at that time. But either way, to, to put the laminate, we could not put the laminate on the Plexiglas. It had to be glass, so that was a replacement we had to do for the laminate. And that's pretty much it, unless anybody's got any questions with Capital Projects.
I, I just have one question. What about the, the leaks at North Coffee Gym, was all that taken care of?
Leaks at? North Coffee, yes, North Coffee leaks, the gym, yes, they have been fixed.
Did we, did we get any insurance? Did we get any insurance out of that? Did we waited too long?
That actually was taken care of by the builder, the construction company, which was, I believe it was S and S Construction.
But we had to pay them, didn't we?
We did not have to pay them, no.
So they came back in and?
They, they came back and took care of the leaks, yes.
And what about the gym floor?
The gym floor, we, we put a coat of polyurethane or, or shellac, however you want to say it, on it. We still have the, the one little spot that needs to be repaired. I've already talked to Kirk Mills about getting somebody out there to give me a price on it, but that's kind, I'm waiting on him.
But we, we had to pay for the gym floor and the, S and S didn't pay for the gym floor?
We will probably have to end up taking care of the gym floor, yes.
And the painting, and the painting of the walls where it?
We will probably end up having to take care of the painting of the walls and the plan is to that, to be done during the summer, yes.
Well now, I just want to verify, New Union Gym does not have leaks?
Not that I know of.
Okay. I don't know why I was told they did, you might want to check.
I, I've been out there several times and we, we do have one, one small leak, but, but that's all been taken care of, I, I don't know, but it was anything.
But you did have a leak, okay, that was.
But, but as of right now, I don't know of any leaks and that's been a while, quite a while back.
Okay, and did insurance take care of that?
There wasn't anything for insurance to take care of with that. Now there is still some things going on about the gym roof at New Union. And I don't know if Dr. Powell wants to, to comment on it or not, but, but there is some things still going on about the watertight warranty with New Union's gym. And, and that is actually right now in.
Mr. Cagle has it.
Mr. Cagle has it.
Oh.
I've been out there a couple of times, Ms. Jones, I might say a couple of times, to New Union and, and North Both. And I asked about the leaks and at that, it's been probably, you know, a month or two ago and neither one of the principals said anything about any more leaks right now. But as, as Mr. Shores said, there, there was, is a problem with the company right now with the roof at New Union and needs some work done on it. And we've given that information to Mr. Cagle and he is trying to find out what he can do about it. We were concerned about a statute of limitations, but I think based on what he told us, we, as a governing entity, there is no statute of limitations on some of those things. So he's working on that.
And I think as a board, we need to know what companies that was, that created these problems and look at them differently, you know, if they come with a bid.
Oh, without a doubt. You, you will definitely know if, if this company puts in for a bid.
I doubt if they'll be able to get anything in Coffee County.
Mr. Shores, what about the gym seating? Is that at the high school, is that going to take place this summer?
The, the last I talked to with bleachers and seats, they are waiting for confirmation on when materials is going to be, they're going to be getting the materials. The plan is for it to be during the summer. They've asked Mr. Parsley on some dates that they can actually get the gym so that they can work on it. But they have not completely gotten the confirmation on getting the materials. It just has to be done before, and I want to say it's the Monday after fall break is the date, deadline that they had.
Okay.
But it should be done before basketball season gets into full swing.
Okay.
Yes.
Further questions for Mr. Shores? All right, how about a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Mr. Cordell, can second?
Oh, I'll second that.
All right, I'll signify by saying aye. All right.